On the air, welcome everyone to the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board Meeting for July 20th, 2023. Please start by joining me for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, we have a long agenda, but as short, but as you can see, it's summer. For those online, we have a quorum of four planning board members today. All right, first up is Casper Kill, South Road Development. Is there anyone here representing? Appreciate you guys going back to the drawing board, discussing with the town and the county and everything.
I'm Kevin Marinin from the ownership. We own the parcels in question that are under the title to Town Center Poughkeepsie that are running on Route 9, and a separate affiliate of ours also is the owner of golf course property behind it. And I'm here tonight with Tom Carrigan from La Bella, who's here, who will make the site plan presentation. We also have our traffic consultant, Phil Greeley, who is behind me to my right. In the event there are some questions, Phil will have to get out of here around 6:00, so if there's, hopefully, we're not on that long to begin with, but if there are some questions for him, just let's see if we can get them to him before he has to depart.
Sorry to cut in, but I'm looking to share the screen for a presentation we have.
Yeah, hold on, let me give you the power to do that. Go ahead.
All right, I think Tom is just about ready. Before we begin, I wanted to say one thing for the benefit of the board and the public, even though the board's well aware. The development carries the title Casper Kill. It does affect a very small portion of Casper Kill property, but there was a media article that appeared that seemed to indicate that the golf course property itself was subject to development. That is not the case. As we know here, there are only a small unused portion of the property behind, an unused portion of golf course property, that is, presently unused, that is being proposed for this, to parking area, primarily to meet the town code for parking, an area that doesn't affect the use of golf course or golf play, or any use of the Casper Kill property is presently used. But also, I wanted to just make that opening statement for the benefit of those who saw that article.
Okay, great.
Good evening. As Mr. Marinin mentioned, my name is Tom Carrigan with La Bella Associates, presenting the project. It's located at 2264 to 2270 and 2284 South Road, which is Route 9 in the Town of Poughkeepsie. Will be seeking to join two existing parcels, as well as, as Mr. Marinin mentioned, take part of an unused portion of the golf course property to get to 11 acres, which is the requirement of the CHCO district, which the town board approved for this parcel in January of this year. The existing conditions of the site, there is the, obviously, previously mentioned golf course, there is an existing old abandoned cement plant, as well as a vacant retail space and another retail space currently occupied by Davis Furniture. We are proposing seven buildings for the property and 329 parking spaces. One of those will be a grocery store. Three of the buildings will be mixed use, some residential and retail and service industries, and three commercial buildings. The total non-residential area is 84, 85,400, with, and there are 26 dwelling units associated with the project. The planning board has seen the plans that we are seeking for the lot line adjustment, as well as site plan and architectural review. So this is a sketch of the plan that was developed with our office and town staff and in collaboration with the county planning. As I mentioned, there are seven buildings. The grocery store, a fast food use, a building that is split between a restaurant use and retail, the first of the mixed use residential and retail buildings, and then as well as two more here with a plaza in between, and another restaurant use towards, up towards Route 9. We are showing some open space areas for pedestrian use, this pocket park here, this area over, keep open over here, as well as this plaza area. And we'll be having a tree line bazaar to create a, more of a Main Street aesthetic as you enter the site. As is required by the CHCO district, we have increased, we are probably going to increase the lot size to 11 acres. The requirement is 10, but in order to get the adequate parking and grading and other site amenities, we are up to get to the 11 acres. We have adequate frontage, and the maximum height on any of the buildings is, they're all one-to-two story, won't be exceeding four stories. The minimum non-retail density for the property is 27% for the 25 required, and we are permitted 44 dwelling units. We are proposing 26. We are limited by the available parking to meet, the ability to expand the amount of dwelling units on the property. And the maximum single retail use is 70,000. We are at 40,000. We do not meet the 10% of the open space, but we understand the planning board has the ability to waive this requirement. Previous plans, we were able to meet that requirement, but in order to get the layout that was preferable with required parking, made that infeasible.
Can I just ask a quick question while I think of it? The apartments in 26, are they, do you know at this point, are they primarily one bedroom, two bedroom?
They're mostly one bedrooms. There's a mix of one and two.
Okay, thanks.
I think it was 18 and eight, I think, is the mix between one bedroom and two bedroom, something like that.
Because that goes toward parking as well.
Yeah, it does.
All right, thanks.
As far as the grading and drainage of the site in its current condition, it's sloped up from Route 9 on the concrete plant. It's somewhat level and then very steeply slopes up towards the rear. On the site with the vacant retail space, as well as the Davis Furniture, it slopes up generally towards the rear. So in general, the site slopes towards, away from Route 9 toward the back when it reaches the golf course property, in which case there is red line, and it slopes back down. The site is generally covered with impervious surface or compacted in gravel kind of surfaces. The property to the south, which has the retail use, the existing retail uses, is mostly paved, and the property to the north, which is the concrete plant, is mostly that gravel surface. There is no substantive stormwater treatment or management on the site. It generally flows towards Route 9 across these areas, and in most cases flows into the Route 9 storm sewers. We're proposing a more gradual grading from Route 9 towards the rear, going from west to east to meet the grades at the rear, which will require retaining walls behind the grocery building, behind the building D4, which is the larger of the mixed use buildings, and on the southern end where that larger shared parking lot is, where we will have a tiered wall system to create a bit of a terrace aesthetic. For stormwater treatment, we will be having three detention practices and one infiltration practice to capture and retain runoff and attenuate it to the, up to the 100-year storm event. Treatment will be either the infiltration mentioned, or through one of two jellyfish filters, which is a proprietary practice by Contec, which meets the 80% TSS removal requirement. The project is a redevelopment project with an increase in impervious area, allowing us to utilize those systems. As far as water and sewer concerned, total wastewater and water generated by the project for the residential component is 3740, and for the commercial restaurant retail service component is 26,900, for a total of 30,640. There is an existing eight-inch water main along Route 9, which we are proposing to tie into for our domestic and fire services. We'll have a water meter at that location as well, which we have designed to meet the town standard. In our current, as far as the sewer is concerned, in our current submission, we are showing a connection to a pump station to the north in a property, immediately to the north, which, when originally was installed, they, in parallel with the forest main that's currently being used, they also installed a four-inch forest main with anticipation for a future connection. As I said, the current plan shows a connection to that pump station and upgrading it to meet the town standards, which would be a Smith &amp; Loveless vacuum prime pump instead of the submersible pump that's there now. We are currently exploring other options to meet some of the concerns that have popped up from this, which we'll be providing in the future submission. As far as traffic is concerned, Phil Greeley is here tonight, as Kevin mentioned, and a traffic impact study was prepared and revised for this submission and studied the intersections of Route 9, IBM Road and Kingwood Park, Route 9, and the entrance to the golf course of Casper Kill, which is to the north. Route 9 and the southbound U-turn, Route 9 and the Neptune Drive and side access, which is the main access, which will be a signalized intersection for both the current use and the future use. Route 9 and the South Gate Drive, and Route 9 and the reconstructed northern access on the site. The recommended improvements from that study were upgrades to the traffic signals and a multiple lane exit from the site, southbound left lane turn on Route 9 into the site would be increased as well. We have begun coordination with Dutchess County Transit for Bus Access. We are currently showing a bus shelter location along Route 9 that is being reviewed by the DOT currently, which we have begun contact with. There is currently a bus stop in front of the Friendly Ford to the immediate south of the site, so this would be an improvement over that. Currently, we are showing 16 electrical vehicle parking spaces on the site. Some of them are AD accessible, but this meets the requirements of the town. Some of the comments we received were about the existing northern and Neptune access remain, and the, we removed, in a previous submission, we had a access to the south end of the site, which was intended for emergency access only. We have revised the plans to remove this and now show only the two entrances mentioned. For the sewer, as I mentioned, there, we've received many comments, which we are reviewing and reviewing alternate design, which will be included in the future submission. As far as the drive-through for the fast food, we, the previous submission, there were some issues with that, which we have reviewed and provided a revised concept for that. It's moved from the southern side of the site to the northern side of the site. Previous planning board meeting, it was noted that there may be a potential to connect to the golf course as part of some future development, which is not proposed as part of this project. We will be showing that in a future submission. And also, it was brought up making connections to the Friendly Ford and the halftime crew property. We currently are maintaining the existing northbound entrance and access to that crew and halftime at the front of the site, but removing the rear connection. And there was no connection on the Friendly Ford. This is due to the, making the topography for the proposed grading work on the site. We were unable to maintain those connection points. There was a previous comment from the county planning about locating the grocery on the southern parcel instead of as was shown on the northern parcel, which is prohibited by deed on the southern parcel. And as I mentioned, we are limited by the number of retail, residential units that we can put in by the available parking that we can provide on the site. As listed, the approvals we'll be seeking, as I mentioned, we already received from the town board the designation for the CHCO district, which we received in January of this year. We will need this planning board's approval for site plan, the lot line change, the lot consolidation, and architectural review. We have begun engagement with the water department and sewer department for those approvals. We'll need this planning board's MS4 acceptance. We've already begun engagement with Dutchess County for their approval, for the planning department. We, once we have a firmer idea of the water and sewer, which, as I mentioned, we're working on, you know, we will begin consultation with the Department of Health. We will need the approval for the general permit from the New York State DEC and for the speedies permit, which will be addressed in future submission. And we have begun consultation with the Department of Transportation, New York State DOT, for the highway work permit. And we have begun, I believe, received, which will be part of a future submission, for the, with the New York State Office of Parks and Rec and Historic Preservation, the letter of no significant historic impact for the site. That's all that we have at the moment. Do you have any questions from this board?
I'll get to that. Great.
Do you mind just going back to the first slide? I just, there's some people that trickled in, and just to make sure that it's clear, because there's kind of multiple boundaries, and with the colors, sometimes it can be confusing. So the red outline, if you could just maybe move your cursor over that?
So the red outline shown here represents the limit of disturbance for the project.
That's where the project will be located?
Correct, yes. And the dashed blue line is a thousand-foot buffer, which is just to show nearby properties to the project. It doesn't represent where the, what the project will impact.
Yep.
Where's the entrance to the golf course?
The entrance to the golf course is...
Much further north up at...
At this location.
So this location, just for declarities, is north, just immediately north of the Ford dealership and south of the halftime beverage. So it's the parcels along the...
There's a couple of... It was the old, it used to be Duke Pontiac.
Davis Furniture.
Now it's Davis Furniture.
All right, that is a general rule. We're not open for public comment just yet, so if you don't mind just holding on to that for a minute.
I just thought it would be important to repeat that, because I knew a couple of folks had trickled in. So that's important, because for public hearing notices, you know, obviously, the Casper Kill property, anyone who was adjacent or adjoining to that property line received a notice, and rightfully so, was asking questions about where the proposal was. So we just want to make that clear. So, okay, so the application is on, this is the applicant's second appearance before the planning board. It is on for its first public hearing tonight. It's on for a seeker review, where the planning board declared their intent to be leagancy for seeker in February, and to date, no objections have been received. It's on for a lot merger, which is primarily managed through the assessing department, but also a lot line revision. In your recommendation memo, it's largely language that comes straight out of our town code from the lot line revision chapter. And it is also on for site plan review. Staff still has a number of comments related to that review, but as was indicated, we've been working pretty diligently with the applicant and Dutchess County Planning to try and address many of the comments that have been received from staff members. And then tonight, of course, we'll be hearing from the public. So we're, you know, going to continue to work through those site plan comments and refine the application. So as was noted, it's on for a public hearing this evening. Staff is recommending that the application, or the public hearing be adjourned, and that the planning board defer action with comments on the application. Just for the board's benefit too, of course, we have a site civil engineer who reviewed the application in addition to a traffic engineer, and they're both on to answer any questions and also provide an overview of their comments. I didn't really want to go through, you know, like 30 comments I've provided, so, you know, again, I just, I think that we're definitely working in the right direction, cleaning up minor plan-related items, you know. There are certainly some other discussions about location of refuse along Route 9, you know, let's say like loading areas and unloading areas for deliveries, and making sure that we're managing traffic flow on the site, but also pedestrian access, making sure that we're also including activated areas for those residents that would be living in this area, you know. And then, of course, the traffic component is significant as it is located along Route 9. So again, with the traffic impact study having been provided, we are also looking at that.
All right. Thanks, Kristina, and thanks for clarifying. This is not a development of the golf course at all. This is just the commercial properties along Route 9, and it's targeted for some mixed use. Let me check with Andy from Engineering. Does he have any...
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, so as Kristin mentioned, we have a number of comments on the project. Our review, as, you know, will continue as they submit additional information. You know, sewer and water supply, sewer in particular is of particular interest to us to make sure that the pump station, however, ends up being configured is according to town standards. We also had some concerns about the access to the easterly side of the halftime property. I just want to make sure that that still functions after the project is completed. So we just asked that you work with the neighboring property owners to work out those details. Thomas mentioned the stormwater design of the project. We did not get an updated SWIP this time around, but our, you know, we have reviewed it previously, so our review of that will continue. Overall, I think the new layout is a significant improvement from the previous submission, and we'll look forward to kind of working with, continuing to work with them to bring it to a point where it's, everybody's happy with it.
All right, thanks, Andy. That sounds good. Yes, it is a big improvement from their first swag. We go to Mark. I see you're on for our traffic standpoint, parking.
Yes, good evening. Mark Petrow from JMC with a traffic engineering consultants for the planning board. We did review the applicant's submission. They did provide a traffic impact study, as well as we reviewed their site plans as well. Regarding the traffic study, we really just wanted to make sure that things were very clear as far as what's being proposed, as far as mitigations, and who's being, who's the one implementing those improvements. So there are some clarity items that we asked for and further corrections in regards to the traffic impact study. We did note there's a coordination item that needs to be at least cleared up between the site plans and the traffic study, as the traffic study shows three exiting lanes opposite Neptune, where the site access is, and the site plans only show two. So we just asked to make sure that we're consistent between the site plans and the traffic impact study, but want to make sure we're showing the right operations for the development on Route 9. I will make note that the town is obviously reviewing the traffic, as well as the New York State DOT, who has jurisdiction over Route 9, so they're reviewing not only the traffic study, but also the improvements that are being proposed along Route 9 for this project. So that will be a continual review between us as well as DOT, because they will need a highway wear permit to perform work within the state right of way. As far as the site plans, I did have some number of signage comments as it relates to particular locations and designations. I did want to echo a comment that Andy had mentioned about the halftime development. I know he mentioned about the access behind halftime to the east of the building, but I will want to make sure that the applicant is aware and they don't prohibit some of the parking spaces in the rear that would need that backup aisle for some of those existing parking spaces. We don't want to make sure we restrict those parking spaces that are on the other property with the closing off of that section. So I would ask the applicant to look at that further. But we'll also mention too, they did provide some truck turning. I asked for some clarity, because it looks like the trucks, one of them, one of the movements goes over the curb, so we'll ask to clean that up. But also, there's some where the overhang of the vehicle goes over the curb, but we don't want it to interfere with some physical objects such as signage or lighting if it goes over the curb. And there's also locations that are shown in the site plan as mountable sections that are shown as striping that are specifically just related to truck maneuvers. And we asked that the applicant look further at those areas as far as additional alternators may be raised, mountable section, and with different materials, just to distinguish that a little bit further. But there is other comments, but I don't want to get all into them. But that's, you know, the gist of what I had in my review.
All right, thanks, Mark. Yeah, and as you mentioned, I guess, you know, you've gone through a few iterations of the plan, so there might be a few things out of sync. That's all. That's just some cleanup things there. All right, this is on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to the second, called to question. Halls in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion passes four to zero. At this point, anyone who wish to comment from the, from the public that's in the room here?
If you guys wouldn't mind stepping down so that someone, that someone, people can come up to the microphone. We'll start in the room.
And we will have to stick to our three-minute limit, I'm afraid, since we have a long agenda in general.
Is there anyone in the room who wishes to comment on this application? Yes, please come on up.
Come on up to the microphone. Just say your name and...
Yeah, my name is Shen Bin Ko. My name is Shen Bin Ko. I live in Napier Road, which is adjacent to Country Club, which is exactly the border to the Country Club. And we have lots of deers coming out of the Country Club. There is an old metal fence, but it has been very old. I think the deer, time to time, jump out, and lately, we have lots of deer. And I am the victim of the Lyme disease, and it is very difficult. And my neighbor also, her mother is 80 years old, and she told me that her mother was bite twice also. So my concern is that the new development probably may cause a deer, may push a deer out of the property more and into our neighborhood. And I'm wondering if the board or the owner can consider reinforce the existing fence, which is very old, or build a new one to prevent the deer coming out of the property.
Okay.
It's my concern. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else in the room who wants to comment on this application? All right, so how about on Zoom? We have a number of people on Zoom. You can use the raise your hand feature or just unmute yourself.
Use the wave your hand feature also.
Or wave your hand if you're, if you have your video on. Most of you don't have your video on, so I can't see you. Anybody? I see one person did unmute themselves. Tommy's iPhone, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Hi, my name is Tom Polkowski. I live not far from the area. Is there any on-off ramps for this project on Route 9 area?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. I mean, it does not look like we're proposing it at this time, but the traffic studies will have to be done to make sure whether it's...
Yeah, everybody knows that, you know, you live on Route 9. It's a gamble to get off. And so if you're putting stores, you know, probably suggest putting on-off ramps, or at least an on-ramp, if that makes sense. You know, a turning lane or some, something along that lines.
Yep, there are, there is a access shown at Neptune Road, at the signalized intersection, and an access on the northern end of the proposed development. You should take a look at the plan set. We do have our, our traffic engineer who commented earlier, who's been working with the applicant and the DOT on those, looking at all of those issues, so.
Okay, I apologize. I got on the meeting a little late, so I didn't get a chance to really look at anything, but actually, I like what's going on. I, you know, good luck with everything, guys.
All right, thanks for your comments, and we'll take... All right. Thanks for your comments, and we'll take, make sure that the traffic flows.
Anybody else on the Zoom wishes to comment on this application?
Not seeing anybody. We are gonna be back for more. Yeah, really other opportunities. When do you think you'll be able to come back in September or August? Probably too soon for August.
My comeback. If you're gonna ask some questions, they should probably.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Yep. Kevin, I, come on back up.
Come on back up. Yep.
Do you feel when your next mittel will be for?
Tom advises me right now that we can make a partial submission. We're not gonna be fully ready, so I'll leave it up to you.
Okay. Oh, we can always adjourn it again at 5:00.
Yeah. I mean, I think we would rather you have a full submission when you come back. I just, you know, it's probably a better use of your time and ours. So if you want, if you think it makes better sense to wait till September, that's fine, although August, if you're ready, the deadline is Monday.
Yes, we're, we're working to address the comments we received. The items we will not be able to address are, we won't have a updated SWIP yet, and we will not have addressed the sewer concerns. We're still exploring different options for that, so.
I mean, if you were looking to make progress beyond just making another submission, like say for seeker purposes, I mean, we would absolutely need to have the SWIP in like almost final form. So I, you know, I would advise against it, but maybe that's me just being selfish of my own time.
Well, that's allowed. So we'll take it under advisement. If we have useful information to provide in a partial submittal, we will do so. But if it is simply make work for people, we will.
Yeah, I mean, it costs you money to do this, to make a submittal too.
Well, we, we're aware of that.
All right. Well, just, just in case, I move we adjourn.
Well, do you want to talk with the board or I'm?
Well, we can still adjourn. Yeah.
Yeah. I'll just move we adjourn the public hearing to August 17th, 2023.
Second.
Move to the seconded, call to question, halls in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes four to zero. And if you don't make August, we can just adjourn again to whatever you can.
Understood.
All right. This time we'll go around the board for further comments and start with Peter.
Mr. Clinton, can I make a comment?
Who's that?
Well, we just closed the public hearing for, for now. We adjourned it till next month, till August. Were you trying to unmute before? I'm sorry. Have we missed you?
Yes.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take one more comment then.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm a hole nowhere in Crown Heights in the neighborhood that's on the west side of Route 9.
Yep.
And has there been any meetings or with the people that live in this community, or could we have one as a good neighbor policy to see the actual impact? That first chart, you really can't see how it impacts the Crown Heights neighborhood.
It's all, it's on the east side of Route 9 where the Davis Furniture is now. So that's, just to let you know that. So shouldn't.
So the dotted line that comes back over on the west side of Route 9 doesn't apply?
Right, correct. That's just, they're just showing whole, the overall area overview.
Well, properties within a thousand feet.
Yep.
So some of them, yes, they're on the other side of Route 9, but they're on the other side of Route 9.
It's just to illustrate. Yeah, just kind of illustrative. So there's not, no, no activities on that side of Route 9 on your side. All right.
Okay.
Thanks for your, thanks for your comment. And we will have the public hearing will still be open in August, as we said, or September. All right.
Yeah, that's what we'd like to have is a good neighbor relationship, and we'd like to understand what's actually gonna impact our neighborhood.
Yep, that's understandable. All right. Thank you.
If you, what was your name, sir?
Joseph Marsh.
Joseph. If you, you know, at all would like to come call or stop by the planning department, I'd be more than happy to talk through the project with you at, at minimum. So if you would like to follow up with me, I'm a planner in the planning department. It's Kristin Taylor.
Okay, Kristin will do that.
Great.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Let's move around, round the board. Peter?
First, in response to your question about the residential mix, there are four studios, 14 one-bedroom and eight two-bedroom. The second thing is, I'm not really sure. There was some concern expressed by the applicant about not being able to meet the 10% open space requirement. I'm not really sure how much flexibility we have with that, but it's certainly something that we'll look into. The, the, at our last meeting night, expressed some concerns about queuing at the exit. And it looks like we're beginning to come together on that issue. I very confidence in Mr. Greeley. I'm sure that he'll be very responsive to any inquiries made by, by our concern, our consultant in that regard. I have a question for our engineer, and that is with regard to the geotechnical study that was done. I just want to know if you've had a chance to review that and if you have any questions regarding the geotechnical study.
We have not reviewed that yet, but we will certainly make that part of our future review.
And my last question is with regard to your, your environmental impact statement here. I understand that the EF map, EAF mapper, you know, casts a, a big umbrella. But under the section of potential contamination history, you know, there is a history there. And I'm just wondering, that's on page 10 of your report about former hazardous waste site and IBM site. What effect, if any, does that have on this site?
Considering the whole IBM site is down gradient, I doubt it has any significant impact. But if it's appropriate or helpful, we have, as a standard property owner practice, as you might expect, we did phase one and a necessary phase two environmental investigations on these properties.
Did you do an environmental site assessment, part one?
Yes.
Okay. I, I didn't see that in, in your report.
No, we didn't, we didn't submit it. But it's very clean, but I think we can certainly submit it if it's.
If you could, I was gonna ask our engineer, was my next question to him, whether or not this site might meet the threshold for requiring an ESA part one. But if you have it and you wouldn't mind submitting it to our engineer, I think that would be great, just so we could check that, that box off. Okay, we can do that. Great. Thank, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Kevin. Peter?
Actually, just so everybody knows, there are two, one for, there are two parcels in question. So there are two such reports.
Yep.
So you'll get two.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? Ben?
It's early in the process. I don't really have many comments. I think you're making good progress with the town staff and seems to be moving along. The DOT, is that, I didn't see any comments in the packet from them. Is that all going to Mark? I saw town and county.
I mean, they should.
Phil, come on up.
DOT should be given their own, their own say into this.
Yeah, and traditionally, when the planning board circulates, their intent really agency, we do have the coordination and consultation with them. Typically, those email responses say that they're looking forward to reviewing the plan and that they usually acknowledge that they're okay with the planning board meeting the lead agency. However, I know that there's been other.
So just a quick update. So DOT was brought in early in the process on this project. We've had several calls, including calls with town staff to review some of the, you know, concerns in terms of number of access points. So they've provided comments until they get into this, the new plan that we are seeing tonight. We haven't gotten official, you know, technical comments, but the plan has incorporated their initial comments on the number of driveways, some of the improvements, sidewalks, the bus stops, you know. So they've already given, in one of the meetings, we had a virtual call with some of the town members, and they kind of went through their laundry list. So I think by the next meeting, we will probably be getting some more technical comments from them.
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
But we've made a full application to them to keep that process moving.
All right. Good.
It's basically the same entrances off Route 9 that exist today at Neptune Road.
Yes.
And, and the one at the north by halftime.
Correct. There were the, as Tom indicated before, there was a previous plan had another access point that was eliminated. So yes, it's using the current curb cuts basically.
Yep. Great.
Upgraded, of course.
Thank you. That's it.
All right. Thanks, Ben.
Did you ask them about D7 at all?
I did not.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
So when looking at the plans, there's a lot of internal pedestrian walkways, very clearly laid out. However, at D7, there seems to be lacking, and I believe it's because of grading up from Route 9 to D7. So I was just curious if there's any possibility of improving pedestrian connection there.
So as we've had the plans laid out, excuse me, we were, we were providing pedestrian connections, you know, to the internal parking lots.
Right.
But there are some sidewalks coming up from Route 9 that would also.
On the other side.
Right, that would connect. And there is a crosswalk from that side over to the plaza area between buildings D5 and D6 and D7. And so that would be the connection that we are proposing for that.
Okay, because on the plans, it looks like if someone wanted to go to D7, they'd have to go on the other side, go up, and then actually cross the parking lot with no crosswalk. So I was just wondering if there's any possibility of actually, here, here, there's no, there's no connection here.
Yeah, so.
There's no connection.
I'm thinking perhaps probably be.
That's in progress.
Yeah.
Right. So the issue with that would be we, we are, because that is the main entrance and exit of the site, we, we didn't propose a pedestrian crossing there.
Right. Though my, my concern is, is D7, you're proposing a restaurant. So if someone wanted to go to said restaurant, they would have to go up Route 9 on the other side, go up the pedestrian, walk past D3, and then cross technically at like the grocery store over to D5 and then come down all the way to D7.
No, not necessarily. They could, they could, there is a sidewalk on the north side of the main entryway that comes up into the site behind D3, which crosses the, at the T intersection, crosses that to get beyond the main entryway.
I, I think when we're kind of talking, we're missing the, the right thing. Why don't we talk about this, why don't we talk about this as part of our follow-up discussion? Because Kristin knows exactly what, what Nicole's asking about, and it would probably just be easier to do it that way, but.
If it's a restaurant, make sure there's pedestrian access to it.
Mm-hmm.
Well, because there's no parking adjacent to it, really. So.
Right.
There got to be parking.
They would have to park and then.
Parking over here next to the grocery store or in front of it and then.
Right, and then.
Walk across.
We'll talk about it, and then we'll make sure the.
That's fine. That's fine.
I mean, as well as these other.
Right.
Service uses as well for people to get to.
Okay. Yep, that was it. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. I had a few questions. Blasting, that hill that's there right now, it has to be taken down at least partial, partway. Do you think blasting will be needed or?
I would think it would be, yeah.
Think it would be. So to keep, keep forward advised and.
Yes.
Others, I'm sure that.
Yeah, that's why I think you were asking about the geotechnics.
Yeah, they spelled it out, pretty much. So. That they are gonna need to blast. Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was rip, ripable or not, but.
Quite accurate, yeah.
Have to see. All right. Why was, I was curious why they have a speed hump at the north entrance there. That's, I think.
That was a requirement of the tenant of D1. We've since removed it. So that in the next mission, it will be, it will be.
Okay, that was, because I think that would just slow down traffic, you know, somebody's gonna rerun, somebody has.
I think also the department.
As someone's coming in, that makes sense.
Yeah.
For fire as well.
Yeah.
And. And the next thing I wanted to ask about was the, for the residential, you're doing a parking shared arrangement, so it's not designated to residential spaces?
We haven't designated the residential spaces.
Or they numbered.
In a segregated way, we're all known.
Okay.
But in, in aggregate, we obviously.
Aggregate, there's an outfit, so it's kind of a shared thing. Okay.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you kept the connection to the north there. I guess the other big thing, I think county, we refer to it as well as Kristin here, about trying to still figure out some, you know, some better residential amenity, some kind of open space for picnic tables or whatever. If something can be done more differently between buildings D5 and D6 perhaps than just a concrete patio or, another thought I had is that I noticed some topography issues there, but you really need the, you really need the road all the way on the north side of D4 that circles the building, or can that be eliminated and use that for?
That, that allows for fire access around the building and as well as circulation for refuse vehicles and so, yes, just, just in order to have, you know, adequate access.
Okay, just a thought, if that, that would provide some space there, but otherwise continue, you'll continue to work on some of that to get some, some amenity there, even if it's artificial turf instead of concrete or.
We can find something.
The intent was for that plaza area between the buildings D5 and D6 to be pedestrian accessible area.
Yeah, that's where the, yeah, I see that's where the tenant entrances are and bike rack there, et cetera. So that looks good. Something to spruce it up. I guess that's all I have today.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application. Direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing to the planning board, and those received from town departments and agencies included, been allocated to the following 1 through 13.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move to the seconded, call to question, halls in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes four to zero. All right. Good luck. Continue.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Always nice to see you.
One last thing, I saw you, we didn't talk about the trash dumpster on Route 9 again. Forgot about that. But yeah, I saw you proposing some blue spruce trees. If it has to stay there, I think those get to be 100 feet tall. So you won't see the grocery store, so maybe some different.
We can, yeah.
Different type of.
Yeah, we can.
Make it look nice if it has to stay. Right next up is Mid Hudson Regional Hospital?
Nope.
Nope, wait a minute. They swapped anything, sorry.
Nope, it's not Mid Hudson. I'm sorry. It's.
It's, it's Wasco Car Company.
Yep. Who is on for Wasco?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is James Karras, JMC. I'm joined this evening by Glenn Shealy from Splash Car Wash Incorporated, the applicant.
Read tonight.
All right. Do you want to do a quick presentation on what you've changed?
Sure. We'll give a brief overview of the application for the benefit of the public here for the public hearing this evening. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen.
Wait, I might need to let you do that.
Oop, looks like I'm disabled at the moment from doing that.
Try again. You should be all right.
There we go. Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so we are here this evening for a continued seeker review and opening of the public hearing for an application located at 2245 South Road, which is a proposed redevelopment for a automate, automatic car wash use on the property. The existing site is just under one acre in size, 0.95 acres located in the BH Highway Business Zoning District. The property is formerly completely developed. It was used as the Humberto's Restaurant, a locksmith use, and also was an existing car wash. You'll see the car wash tunnel location highlighted in. You'll see the car wash tunnel location highlighted in the yellow dashed area. We're coincidentally proposing the wash tunnel in the same location. There are two existing curb cuts serving the property, one on Route 9 and one at the intersection of South Gate Drive. The site is almost 100% impervious coverage, coming in at over 90%, and the existing building size is 10,700 square feet. The approvals we require are site plan and special permit approval from your board. There are three area variances which we are seeking from the zoning board of appeals, with whom we met last week on July 10th. We also require DOT Highway Work Permit Approval and various Dutchess County Agencies as well. The proposal is for a automatic car wash building and complete redevelopment of the site. The development will consist of one structure totaling 5,400 square feet in size, which will house the automatic wash tunnel. Going from top to bottom here on these notes, you will enter the site, making a right-hand turn in off of southbound Route 9. You will queue in one of three queuing lanes to approach the ordering kiosks, where you will purchase a wash package. Then, one car will be released via an automatic gate at a time into the queue. They will either proceed through the wash tunnel to receive their wash, or they will bypass the wash tunnel using the bypass lane and either exit the site, or use one of the free vacuum stations that are part of the wash package. We are proposing to close the South Gate driveway curb cut here, which offers an improvement to these intersection operations here and further organizing that. We're proposing some sidewalks along Route 9 as well in consultation with DOT. And the wash operations, which Glenn Shealy can go into more detail on if needed, are state-of-the-art. There'll be water reclamation, you know, and we're also reducing the impervious surfaces on the site from the 92% mentioned earlier down to a zoning compliance 71.4%. So there's an opportunity here to, you know, really improve and enhance the visual aesthetic aspect of this visual corner on Route 9. We're proposing a robust landscaping plan along the South Gate Drive frontage with consideration to the adjacent residential neighborhood to our south. And I feel that this will be a good location, a good site for this use. As I mentioned previously, we did appear before the zoning board of appeals last week to begin the area variance approval process for their consideration. Quickly, those three area variances are minimum lot size for two acres, where we are at 0.95, and then two linear setback distance variances, one from a 500-foot setback to a residential use in a residential district, the other from a trash enclosure within 50 feet of a residential district. Both of those are represented here on this plan dimensionally, and we believe we had a good meeting with the ZBA, and we understand that they are unable to render a decision on the variances until seeker process is completed with your board as lead agency. So since we initially met with the planning board back in February, we received numerous comments from the town, from the town's consultants, and other Dutchess County Agencies, which we provided a full comment response to, in addition to a detailed comment response letter. And the application remains largely the same as it was initially, however, with all of those comments addressed. We did also receive comments earlier this week to continue the refinement of the site plan, which we will work through diligently and get back to your board. So that's an overview of the project here. I'm happy to answer some questions, both from your board and from consultants and from any of the members of the public that are here this evening. Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. Go to Kristen for this one as well.
Okay, yeah, thanks James for the overview, just for the board's benefit. It is on for a public hearing this evening, it is the first public hearing for this application. It's also on for seeker review for an unlisted action. The planning board did declare their intent to be lead agency in February, and to date, no objections have been received. Staff will also note that it's on for a special use permit review, site plan review, and architectural review. I did pull out for the board, language that is specific to motor vehicle service facilities, which is what car washes do fall under in the town code, under the Highway Business District. There's also even further code language if a car wash is proposed under this sort of umbrella of motor vehicle vehicles, motor vehicle service facilities, if I say that five times fast. And so anyway, I, you know, the applicant had provided responses to a number of those code requirements. I have provided italicized responses to those, responses to comments, for the board's benefit. I think that we're still working through some of the details in the special use permit review. Things, you know, related to the queuing, you know, we're demonstrating 21 vehicles, where eight are required. That just gets back to the size of the lot and what is proposed on the lot, and I will leave that to the board to discuss with the applicant. But it is also on for site plan review, and again, that just, I would like to point out just the scale and scope of the proposal has remained largely the same as what was previously submitted in February. As was noted by the applicant, they had gone to the ZBA to sort of get a, take a temperature of the board regarding the variances that would be required for this project. And so, you know, I do think that it's still beneficial if the applicant is so inclined. I would strongly encourage them to meet with staff, multiple of our departments, and also to further the conversation about traffic flow and queuing, especially on the site. We understand that this business has functioned successfully elsewhere, but we just want to make sure that, you know, the board is aware that there is a lot going on on the property, and I think that there are still some concerns related to fire access or otherwise in queuing on and off of Route 9. Some of the turning movements are a little bit questionable, so we want to just take a closer look at those. So that said, staff is recommending that the board open the public hearing this evening, hear any public comment, adjourn the public hearing, and then would defer action with comments.
Alright, thanks Kristen.
And I guess I should go ahead and point out too, again, Site Civil, we have, Andy had reviewed the project, and then also AKRF actually reviewed for traffic.
Alright.
Actually, if you could stop sharing your screen, Jim, or I can do that for you.
Yep, and we can have Andy comment for sharing.
Yep, there we go.
Sure. So, I'll start off with stormwater, you know. Although the site is only 0.95 acres, our threshold for speeds permit coverage is one acre, and because we're right on that like cusp, when we get close to that, we say if you're greater than not 0.95 acres of disturbance, we require speeds permit coverage. So they're indicating 0.98 acres of disturbance, so we are gonna ask that you prepare a SWIP. It appears that with the amount of impervious surface cover reduction, you know, the amount of permanent stormwater management that would be required should be minimal. But we are gonna ask that you provide that and gain coverage under the speeds permit. Noise attenuation, we had asked about the vacuum systems previously, and you responded in your letter. We do just ask that you provide some manufacturer cut sheets of data to support the information on noise that those vacuums will produce. There's a retaining wall or two proposed on the site, and we ask that you provide some details on what they will look like for the board's review. Like Kristen mentioned, we had some concerns about the fire apparatus access and the terrain patterns. Just want to make sure that the Arlington Fire District is okay with those. We continue to have some questions on the grading for the site that will need to be refined. And, let's see, we, as far as the wash water system, you provided some information on the oil water separator sizing and design, which is great, but we do ask that you provide some additional detailed information on the reclaim system itself, how, where that will, where the tanks and such will be located and the sizing and design of those. So, I think that's pretty much it for my comments.
Alright, thanks Andy. Go to Alex, I think, are you on for traffic?
Yes. Good evening, everyone, Alex Ald from AKRF, the Town's Traffic Consultant. So, just to add on to what Andy had mentioned, we had some concerns as well with the truck turning path movement shown on some of the site plans. We just did notice that a few of the truck turning paths did encroach upon some of the pedestrian, the pedestrian walkways that were striped. And tying into that as well, we also had a concern about the pedestrian walkway that was striped with pavement markings on the southern section of the property. There was no grade separation between the pedestrian paths and the actual travel pavement for vehicles. So we would actually prefer to see a raised sidewalk of some sort to designate that pedestrian walkway. Other concerns that we had were regarding parking. Although the overall number of parking spaces on site met the parking requirements, we did notice that the standard numbers, the number of standard parking spaces fell short of the requirement of 22 spaces, where only 17 were provided, but we noticed that the overall number of parking spaces did meet the requirement. So, we just want to see if the number of standard parking spaces could actually be adjusted to meet the requirements. Other items included the access by emergency vehicles as well. The kiosk system, we had some concerns about how emergency vehicles would be able to bypass that, as well as employees who are entering the site as well, whether they would need to queue up behind customers to gain access to the site as well. And on a larger, on a larger scale, in terms of queuing, we had concerns about onsite queuing as well as queuing along Route 9. One of our concerns entailed, if the, at the intersection of Route 9 and South Gate Road, if vehicles start to back up and block the actual drive, the exit driveway, how will vehicles queue up onsite if there ample room for vehicles to queue onsite in the, in that, in the event that that would occur? And one of our suggestions would be to possibly preperform a traffic impact study, which could provide capacity analysis as well as a queuing analysis for the intersection of Route 9 and South Gate Road. In addition, we believe that our comment regarding queuing onsite was partially addressed, and we appreciate that. So, we believe that a traffic impact study primarily focused on the Route 9 and South Gate Road intersection would be extremely helpful in terms of assessing any queuing issues that may occur along Route 9.
Thank you, Alex.
Thanks Alex, I believe the DOT also asked for a traffic impact study in their letter. Alright, it's on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, four to zero. Anyone on the, in the audience here, or on Zoom call, wish to comment on this project? Just unmute yourself and. On Zoom, I see no one in the room ready to comment, so.
I have Tommy's iPhone is unmuted. Is there somebody looking to comment?
Yes, how you doing? My name's Tom Bolgowski.
Okay, go ahead.
I have two questions. How's this gonna impact traffic? And I know I heard the DOT guy talking, but does he really go there and look at the, look at the area? And my second question is to the board. You guys turned down a gas station, which is a Stewart's gas station, how are you entertaining a car wash in that area?
Well, it is a legal use on the parcel, and that's why it's being entertained, the applicant has a right to make an application.
Yeah.
Yep, that's why it's being looked at, but, you know.
Okay, and with the car wash, everybody knows winter time, car washes get busier, and with being so close to Route 9, not having the acreage or the parking or whatever it may be, you know, how do you guys, where are we going with that?
Right, yep, that's something we're looking at, yep.
Okay, alright, alright, thank you.
Thanks.
You guys are.
Thanks for your comment. Anyone else?
Bye.
Anyone else wish to comment tonight? Again, this will be adjourned, so there'll be another comment opportunity.
Yeah, I think that's it for now, I don't see anybody else.
Yes, James, when do you think you'll be able to resubmit, show adjourned to September, or? I guess the submittal deadline is Monday, so.
I would say September.
Because Kristen would like to meet offline with you guys anyway. So, so I move we adjourn the public hearing to September 21st, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, four to zero. Let's go around for comments, start with Nicole.
So, I had a couple of comments. I noticed that you guys were looking to put a chain link fence at the south. We tend to not like chain link fences in the town of Poughkeepsie, and I'm not sure that you really even need one there. So, my suggestion to you is either just completely remove it, or look at some other type of fencing. Because chain link fence isn't very, very nice, to say the least.
We'll do that.
I think I talked to you about this last time, but I wanted to bring it up again. Is there any possibility of reducing the number of vacuum stations?
I think the number of vacuum stations is appropriate for the. But as Kristen alluded to, we're gonna be having some staff meetings to discuss, you know. You know, I think there may be some, some changes that come out of that meeting, but we do believe that the 17 vacuum stations are appropriate for this, for this size project. And they're, and Glenn will tell you, they're a very popular and important component of the, of the use.
Okay, and I'm sure you saw it, but I just want to reiterate, the sewer department wanted to make sure that you were gonna go ahead and pump out that grease trap and remove it before you started meeting there, okay.
Yeah, we saw that comment that came in, and that's something that'll be noted on the demolition and removal plans.
Okay, thank you.
Nicole, if I might, also, for the chain link fence that's proposed at the top of the retaining wall, was that for security reasons that you were proposing that, or?
That's, yeah, that's correct, in conjunction with the landscaping, that fence, the intent of that was for fall protection. So certainly can be reduced to, you know, a four-foot fence or something that would meet the requirements, and as Glenn noted, the fence material is flexible as well.
Okay. We just, we weren't, you know, we weren't totally sure that it was necessary, but that, you know, if it's right, that makes sense with the great change and, but, okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks Kristen, I wondered that myself. Go to Ben, any comments? Yeah. Lot going on in this little parcel. You said they're operating similar sites other where, other places? Is it the same size? Partial as this, and is it on a main road like Route 9?
Glenn, yes, and if you wouldn't mind, I can answer that. Glenn and I are working on a number of these sites together, this is our fifth site actually, and the four other ones are all located on state roadways. Each of those four sites as well are less than two acres in size. They all consist of the same size wash tunnel, they all have the same relative number of vacuum stations, three queuing lanes, three ordering kiosks, and it fits and functions well into, into those sized properties. There's one in White Plains, that's on 1.17 acres, there's one in Clarkstown, that's 1.8 acres, there's one in the town of Southeast on 1.4. There's one in the town of Southeast on 1.4 acres of development area. And there's one proposed in the town of Yorktown on 1.4 acres. So once again, they're all on state roads. They all actually also happen to directly abut residential zoning districts, some with actual residential uses and subdivisions next to them. And two of the four also are at an intersection with a traffic light with a one-way-out exit turn. So this is not unique to, or this situation is not unique to this site. These conditions are something that Glenn actually looks for in a car wash location because of the great pass-by traffic numbers that you see on a six-lane state highway. So, you know, we understand the board's concerns that there does appear that there's a lot of intensity of the use going on here. But it is consistent with their operations elsewhere, and they have a really good track record of operating these sites in a great fashion.
This wash, if I remember right, puts out a car every 20 seconds? Three cars a minute?
Three cars a minute, yes, sir.
That crosswalk at South Gate, is that signal like, you know, where you push a button to cross the sidewalk there? I mean, to cross the road?
That's a detail that I'm sure the DOT will have a requirement for. If we don't have an answer for that yet, but the DOT will specify what those requirements are.
Yeah, it'd be a lot safer.
Yeah, they'll probably require that, Ben, I don't know. See what they say.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, Peter?
And before we move on from that question, Glenn, if you wouldn't mind just elaborating a little bit on the volume of which the vehicles exit? I mean, there's controls to prevent backups and it'll stop the wash and things like that. You know, it's automated and all. Can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Absolutely, absolutely. So in building of the washes with the computer system that we run, we bury loops in the ground, almost identical to what they put at intersections for stoplights. We have safety loops, not only in the tunnel and in the queuing lanes, but also at the exit of the wash. And if you're seeing cars stop or there's too many cars on the exit, it'll shut the tunnel off so there is no accidents or you're pushing cars out of the car wash into a parked car at the end. There's also loops in the entrance that if every 10 minutes is, or, I'm sorry, every... Every five minutes, it sends a report back to us saying how many cars that are processed through the kiosk and speeds the conveyor up to also keep down the amount of cars that are waiting in line at the kiosk to pay to go through the wash. So we're also monitoring the cars going through the wash by digitally watching them if somebody hits the brakes, shuts the wash off. So there's three measures of this computer system that watches everything on the property through loops and digital cameras to make sure there's no collisions and, you know, because you can't see everywhere. But, you know, the age of computers and everything, it's a marvel. When it's working great, you can come to any of our sites to watch it. It's a well-oiled machine.
All right.
Great, that sounds good. I will mention, I attended the, I was down in Middletown, so I went through the wash there and it did seem to flow very efficiently.
You did, yeah?
Yep. It's a little bit bigger parcel than this, but it did flow.
What about cars coming out of the tunnel, the water? In the winter, it could turn to ice there.
There's a couple of different things we do for that. Obviously, we have the drain on the exit. But also, a lot of the high pressure and a lot of the undercarriage wash is done early on in the wash cycle. So that stuff is dripping off before the end of the tunnel. Also, we're running about 20 blowers, which the more air and the more water you can push off a car, the less water is going to be on the ground on the exit. And also, it helps us too because it's a happier customer. I know most car washes have between four and six blowers. We run about 20. And one of the major reasons is that to keep customers happy and water in the tunnel so you can recycle it and, you know, it's better, no ice on the ground, it's a safer environment. So it's one of the features that we do in our tunnels.
Interesting, okay.
Good question, yep. All right, Peter?
I just want to know, due to this property's proximity, the exit proximity to the light at South Gate, did we determine that we're going to request a study at least with regard to that exit and its proximity to queuing? I mean, the DOT has requested that it be done.
Yeah, the DOT requested it, and I think Alex was requesting also here. So it should be looked at. I'm happy to hear that they have loop, detection loops and things because that was a concern of mine as well, that can stop the flow.
I'm requesting this time and Alex Ald again from AKRS. What that traffic study will help us to determine as well, it'll provide us metrics on estimated queues that may be generated at that intersection. So we can at least get a reasonable estimate of how far back we can expect those queues on Route 9 under typical conditions to extend, how far back they can extend back.
Okay. All right. I know when I was a restaurant, I had to wait sometimes to turn out here, but...
Alex, is there a specific year that that data, you know, should be framed around? Like, you know, not 2020?
Ideally, would be post-pandemic. So we prefer within the last year or two, if possible.
Yeah, thank you, Alex, and we can work with you and AKRS to, you know, define the scope of what needs to be studied here, so we'll do that. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Sounds great, thank you.
Anything else, Peter?
No.
All right. And my concern, I think that Nicole brought up, was that, yeah, the fence screening. So you've explained that, that's good, and you have lots of landscaping there. I appreciate that to help shield the neighbors. I had a question about, is there a reason for those speed bumps on the exit? I'm not sure.
Yes, the speed bumps, yes, we understand there's some competing comments here, one from the fire district and one from, well, the requirement under the code is to provide speed bumps, I think, to assist with the removal or shaking off of water drips from the vehicles. That we would be happy to remove those from the plan if, you know, the requirement is waived as far as the special permit criteria. Because as Glenn explained, the blowers do a nice job of taking care of that issue. So, but the reason why they're there is it was a requirement and a special permit.
Okay, we'll have to take a look at that, if that's needed. I guess that's all I have at this point then.
Okay. I move the planning board defer further action on this application. Direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing up the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following, 1 through 12.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, four to zero. All right, let's, you know, meet with the staff there, work through the last comments, and we'll see you in September.
Thank you, thank you very, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, now, Mid Hudson Bridge Hospital.
So eager.
Yep.
That just tells me the staff still order from the other horn, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Good evening, Jerry Schwab with DTS Provident, engineers and planners for the applicant. Also with me tonight is Michael Kraskiewicz, program manager for Rushers Medical Center. And I appreciate the time and effort that your staff and board have provided us so far. We've made a submission the last month for this meeting tonight. And we addressed, I believe we addressed a lot of the comments. I did notice there were a few more that have come in since then. We can go over those. The changes generally or site plan related, as you know, the project is really a restoration project of pavement. And it's about 565 feet of road. And I know you have a public hearing, a public hearing is still open, so if there's any comments that come from the public, we certainly address those. So the changes that we made related to signage, additional signage and those kind of things, additional, no parking signs. We added some more crosswalk signs on the project. I can bring up a plan if you like, or if that made sense.
Sure.
I don't know if I...
Yeah, you can show your screen for a minute, just the...
Yeah, you can do it.
Since it's a public hearing, allow the public to take a look at it.
Sure. Is that, okay?
Yep. Yep, we're seeing it now, thank you.
Okay, great. So let me go back one just for the public's perspective. So this is the Mid Hudson... So this is the Mid Hudson Hospital located on the North Road, 9D is here, and West Cedar Street and then Garden Street Extension is on the rear of the property. The proposed action is the action that's shown in the Reddish area, which is 565 feet of driveway. If you go out to there today, you'll see it's in pretty bad shape. And it goes up to where the ambulance bay is located over here. And over to the top, there is a helipad that's used for emergency purposes. Just for the public's and the board's point of view, understanding is that the helipad is used not that quite frequently like others have been in their facilities, like in Valhalla. But there are about 2.6 landings per week since this year, beginning of this year. The maximum, I think, was six in a week. So it's all dependent on what happens in our society in a way, right? So if there's a lot of accidents or if there's an emergency situation, you may get more. But on average, we're around 2.6 landings per week, is what we had found. And that's consistent over the years that we've, the years that they've monitored it. This is a plan so that you can understand the amount of pavement restoration beginning on North Road, North Street, comes back up, up the hill here. The helipad's on the left. There's a small landscaped island that currently exists today. I know there were some comments about mountable curbing around it, and we've put some striping as requested. Then the ambulance bay is over here. So all this paving here is what we're proposing to be either milled or in some cases, some severe locations where it's failed, to just replace the actual surface itself. And you can see here, the highlighted yellow areas are where existing proposed signs have been proposed in response to some comments. One of the main changes that we are doing here, which is a benefit to the hospital, is when the helicopters land here, there was more of an informal passage to get back into the emergency department. So we've cleaned that up, we've defined it, crosswalks. We actually made an eight-foot-wide crosswalk along this island here so they can actually get into the emergency room as fast as possible. There were some comments about when helicopters come in. And just so you know, the helicopters have to call in to the hospital before they can land. They have to get permission to land. It's a private facility, so each time they want to come here, they have to get permission to land. So they call ahead of time, and then at that point, the hospital engages this signal that you'll see in the top right, the left corner. And then it goes red and people have to stop until it's green, until it's yellow, and then they have to proceed with caution. Or if it's off, they don't have to stop at all. So that's how they manage it, and the signals are on both sides of that helipad area, so to speak. Also, just for reference, this is the island. You can see the curb is pretty beat up. We're going to redo that curving with a mountable curb, but the landscaping will stay. We're not proposing to change that at all. The grass, obviously, will have to be restored around it, but generally, that's the scope of it. We also had some comments about the helipad, whether there was other areas. County Public Works requested us to at least think about that. Just real briefly here, this is an overall area of the campus. You can see on the left here in yellow, I just highlighted the existing helipad site. Other areas of parking are very small and tight, and there's also a lot of obstructions in a way. So we had met with the pilots and a group of pilots about where would we do that, and they recommended this location here, which is wide open. There's not a lot of trees. The trees that are along here are very low flowering trees, so they're not that high. And Public Works was concerned about maybe how close it was to their trail system. There's a big tree buffer before that. So the helicopter goes in there very efficiently. They go down, land, and then they go, actually do their paperwork, and then they go back and leave. So they're not, there's not tons of flights coming in and out, and there's not a concern of this. We think it's maybe 30, 45 days, perhaps, this will be in place for that. In our responses too, we talked about providing some, we provide, we will provide the meetings with the staff, 911, Dutchess County 911, and the other town police and all those folks to, before we even start, put a shovel in the ground that we all understand which lanes may be closed, the timing of everything, the schedule, just so that there's an understanding. And that would be a pre-construction requirement before the contract had even started. And we would update these plans depending on any kind of change to schedule. For instance, if they wanted to do a certain part of that roadway first, we would incorporate that into a plan and have consensus across the board of what the changes would be. So I think this has all been very helpful, and I think we've got a good understanding of what the concerns are in moving this forward, so we appreciate it.
Sounds good, you know, trying to minimize the...
Absolutely.
The time.
Yeah.
Needing that alternate helipad.
Right.
All right, thank you. Kristen?
So it's on for, it's, well, it's actually probably the second public hearing, right?
Yes.
So on for a second public hearing, secret review and amended site plan review for secret purposes. This was a Type 2 action requiring no further environmental review. Wow, I am struggling tonight, environmental review. And then in terms of site plan, yes, staff definitely still had a few comments we would like to work through with the applicant. Most notably, the comment, well, there's a couple that I had passed along earlier this week, one being that we couldn't really move forward on signing off on anything until we had received that DOT approval, or at least like some sort of conceptual approval. They hate when we say that, but that's what we're gonna call it. And then also just the coordination and consultation with DPW. So I don't know that you've actually connected.
I tried to.
Okay, so we can help facilitate that conversation. You know, if the board is inclined to grant you a conditional approval this evening, that would remain a part of your list of conditions, right? So we would want to make sure that they're completely satisfied with what you're proposing. I think having the general timeline of like 30 to 45 days, like being able to give them numbers and stats like that, how many trips per month or week, you know, I think that's beneficial. And then again, just wanting to understand, like, for restoration purposes for that area, because I know there, I think there are some parking lights and just other landscaping in there, so we might want to, I mean, I know it's just a parking lot, but, you know, we want to make sure that you're gonna restore it to whatever, you know, it currently is at minimum. But with that, staff would just recommend that the board open the public hearing, hear any comment. And if you're so inclined to act on a conditional approval, you could close the hearing, adopt a secret resolution, and grant conditional amended site plan approval.
Right, thanks, Kristen. Andy, oh, can you unshare your screen now?
Sure, yeah, most of our comments have been addressed. We just have a few minor comments on erosion semi-control modifications, but otherwise, we have no objection to the board moving ahead with this.
And I will just point out too that we did receive from the town police department, one of the sergeants, that, you know, they had no immediate concern. They just wanted to be kept in the loop as construction would have gotten underway.
All right, thanks. All right, thanks, Andy. At this point, I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, four to zero. Anyone in the audience here or on the call wish to comment? Anyone in the audience here or on the call who wish to comment on the Mid Hudson Regional Hospital?
No one in the room? I take it. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Don't see anyone. I'm muting.
They can unmute, they can raise their hand, they can wave. I'm not seeing anybody.
No. At this point, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Go around the board for last comments. Peter?
No, good luck.
Ben?
This is important. Get it going. No comment.
Nicole?
I just had a quick question. Was Carol, was Carol on tonight?
She wasn't, no.
Okay, because she had a question about, what was it?
There was like-
A white pine?
Yeah, there was like one tree that's probably like, isn't in great shape or in great health.
Right.
That would need to be removed, so.
Yeah, she was concerned about that.
But the concern was Indiana bat habitat.
Yeah, it was a possible Indiana bat habitat, so.
So it'd have to be examined if it's removed outside the-
But she did say it wasn't in good shape, so it was a situation where it might have to come down.
October 1st?
October 1st is when, so if you're not going to be cutting it down before October 1st, and you have no issue, you're fine, you'll be fine.
Right, but after that, yeah.
Yeah, so I have-
If there's any confusion on which tree, can we contact?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. You, oh, before, right, yeah.
I think you said it backwards.
I might have said it backwards.
We'll make sure that we coordinate with Carol.
Yeah.
You can cut after October 1st.
Yes.
I think that can be scheduled then, yeah.
So if you're trying to do it before October 1st, then you need to work through that. All right, anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay, that's it. I don't have any further comments either.
All right, I move that the planning board determine that the proposal meets the criteria for a secret type-two action pursuant to secret part 617.5C2, and no further environmental review is required.
Second. Moved to seconded for secret. Called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for Mid Hudson Regional Hospital insurance work subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of but not limited to the following 1 through 8.
Second. Moved to seconded for conditional. Called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Good to go. Good luck with the project. Next up is extra space storage.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Thank you. For the, you want a presentation, I'm assuming, prior to the opening of the public hearing?
Yeah, if you want to share your screens.
Sure. So for the record, my name is John First. I'm an attorney at Catania, Mann &amp; Ryder, representing the applicant, property owner, South Hills Mall owner LLC. Ken Casamento from LRC Engineering is here. We also have, from the mall owner themselves, we have Greg Ocean, who is joining us remotely, as well as Jack O'Brien, who is here in the flesh. Just a quick overview before we get into the actual site plan details. So we're here for a public hearing. The owner is seeking an advisory report from the town board for a zoning change, as well as a net deck. This is in the initial request. Ultimately, they would like a special use permit, site plan, and architectural review, and the purpose of the project is to repurpose an existing building to allow a self-storage facility. Originally, when we were here last month or so, the zoning tax amendment had two components to it. Since that meeting, we've, the applicant, has decided to basically withdraw the request for the language with respect to the flexible subdivisions. So as you may recall, we initially requested a zoning tax amendment to permit self-storage as an adaptive reuse that would be permitted via site plan and special use permit from the planning board. The other component was to provide flexibility for future subdivision. As I stated, the applicant is withdrawing that second component and would like to just focus on the zoning tax amendment to allow self-storage as an adaptive reuse, subject to special use and site plan approval from the planning board. It's currently not permitted in the zone, so we'd like to add that to the list. The proposed use, the proposed self-storage use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is an opportunity area, as outlined in your comp plan. With shopping centers like this one, there's certainly a recent trend in decreasing amounts of brick and mortar retail stores. According to your comp plan, it's an underutilized site. According to your comp plan, you need to preserve open space and divert development from green areas, which this does. According to your comp plan, you're supposed to take advantage of existing infrastructure, which we do. And according to your comp plan, it says to expand the allowable commercial uses within this shopping center, which is what we're trying to do here. So this redevelopment will not impact future development plans for the entire site. I know the comp plan talks about a broader mixed residential, commercial, walkability, and that's great. We just don't have a plan for that yet. What we propose to do here is located in an existing building. It's located in the rear of the property. It's not going to impact any of those visions that are set forth in your comp plan. The owner is actively exploring different possibilities and scenarios, but at this point, any future development beyond the redevelopment of the Burlington Coke Factory is purely speculative at this point. There's nothing concrete, there's nothing definite. And so that's kind of where we stand with that. I'll have Ken just go over the site plan real quick, because there's really just a lot of minor site plan changes.
Thank you. So from our last meeting, we had talked about, one of the things was some of the parking area, you'll see in the photo on the right, being the pavement in disrepair. The applicant's talked about it with their team, and they're going to get out and they're going to work on redoing that area as part of the application, just resurfacing it and topping it off to get rid of the pavement lines and that, and restriping as part of the application. In addition, one of the comments was raised, which the applicant was unaware of, was since Burlington went away, all those dumpsters that are in the back where they're supposed to be, moved up right in front of Burlington. When you brought it up at the last meeting, it was something that was brought to the attention of the owner, and they went and rectified it and had the mall put back in where they belong, up against the loading area over there. So we have, on the west elevation, we did add sconce lights that are similar to those that are out front, around the side of the building. We have not added any other lights than what, some lights on the building at the entrances, the key entrances, they are lit underneath with soffit lights that were existing, that again, wouldn't be changed. It does have a sign on each side. The, this is the sign on the west side. This one is 50 square feet. And this is the sign on the north side, which is the primary entrance, which is 100 square feet. These are the signs that would match. You'll see there are, I think, four on the north side and two on the, what would be the south elevation. One of the differences you'll see is, from the last time we talked, is on the south side, which is the top right, we did, in fact, remove the green that was on the building there. We also spoke with, instead of painting, we're going to power wash and wash the whole building to keep that color that's there. It's just very dirty and stained from years of not being maintained. So that'll clean up the whole exterior appearance of the whole building. On the north side, we will redo the outside component there into the company green and with the extra space on the front. One of the other things that the board had talked about was landscaping. We did adjust on the south side. Those trees are all going to remain as they are in the picture on the left. On the north side, we're going to add some low shrubs in there. It's not big enough to, the existing space between the building and that, to really do anything of size. But what we did do is, where you'll see in the parking area, where that first car is, where the ADA spot is, we took two spaces away, instead of just one, made a nice landscape island in there, and added two trees in that area as well. And that's really the update since the last time we've been here.
All right, thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Kristin?
Okay, well, thank you to the applicant for giving a pretty thorough overview. This is on for the applicant's first public hearing. It's also on for secret review for a type-one action. The planning board declared its intent to be lead agency in June. To date, no objections have been received. I don't think I'm going to repeat exactly what was stated regarding the zoning tax amendment, but again, it's just the applicant is now only pursuing the self-storage as an adaptive reuse, as subject to special use permit approval, review and approval by the planning board. So they want to add it to the special use permit list that appears in that section of our town code for South Hills Center zoning district. Again, very minor comments related to the site plan review. I appreciate the updates regarding like landscaping, lighting. I think there might have just been some inconsistencies between the plans, because like, I know you did some of the plans, and then I think there was another. Yeah, so just want to make sure that they're consistent. I know you'll look at that. I, you know, I guess, you know, I would just recommend that the planning board open the public hearing, hear any comments. We did actually receive a comment, I just want to, you know, for the purposes of the record, from Keenan Bean. The board has been provided those comments, and staff is recommending adjourning the public hearing, adopting a secret resolution, and providing an advisory report to the town board regarding the requested, as modified, zoning tax amendment changes. And then would defer action with comments. The applicant would then go back to the town board. At the town board, the applicant would also be subject to a public hearing regarding the zoning tax amendment. So, you know, they wouldn't be immediately back, but that's kind of procedurally what would happen next.
Have to come back here then, after that. Assuming they're successful to town board. All right. Sounds good, thanks, Kristin. Andy, anything from your standpoint?
We have some, we have some minor comments on the ADA access and the need for some spot elevations and some construction details, but nothing significant.
Yep, it's an existing building.
Right.
All right. The move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Anyone in the room or on the call who wish to comment on extra space storage tonight?
Nobody in the room. I see a hand raised from Keenan Bean.
Hi, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you. My name is Robert Zid. I'm from Keenan Bean. We represent a property owner at 1998 South Road. Prelimarily, I want to thank the board and the chairperson for hearing our comments and generally for what you guys do. I know it's, I know it's a thankless job, but it's an important one. So the reason that we're here is to really address the zone tax amendment. And, you know, I'll keep it limited. I know my time is limited. First, to allow self-storage facilities as a permitted use in the SHC zoning district is contrary to the town's most recent comprehensive plan. I know counsel has addressed it in his opening comments. But adopted in 2021, the comp plan reveals that the town had a clear vision for the redevelopment of the shops at South Hills. That vision includes residential and experiential uses. I think everyone here knows that this kind of use is neither residential nor experiential. Really, I'd like to piggyback also off the county department of planning, who really pointed out that the self-storage proposal introduces a new use that's not in keeping with the vision of the district that was laid out by the town in its comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan specifically identifies this property as being targeted for multifamily and residential development. The plan describes a future SHC zone that is active, dynamic, and walkable, all goals that are not furthered by this type of activity. It's respectfully requested that this board not issue a positive or a neutral recommendation to the town board. This board has an obligation, I think, to adhere to the town comp plan, and this application is contrary to that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Thanks for your comment.
Anyone else on the Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? You can unmute yourself if, I'm not seeing anyone.
All right, in that case, I move we adjourn the public hearing to September 21st, 2023.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Let's go around the board first.
Carl, before we go around the board, could we ask the town attorney to give us, if she has read the correspondence from Keenan Bean, and she has any comments to share with us for some guidance?
That's a good idea.
I have read the comments from Keenan Bean, and I have heard what the applicant has said. One of the things, when I was in law school or before law school, I thought everything was black and white. And at law school and 30 years of lawyering, I realize it's not. So there are sort of conflicting things within the town code. One of the, as part of an opportunity area, you're looking for infill development with this, which this is. You're looking not to impede open space and things like that. But you have the competing concerns of whether this furthers the ultimate goals for this location, which are mixed-use development, residential, commercial, vibrant community, et cetera. So it really comes down to the boards, and I hate to say that, but there's not, in my mind, a yes or no on the legal answer. There are things to be evaluated. And what we've heard from staff and others is that, you know, this building is existing, and having it vacant does not benefit the town in any way. So repurposing it is not a bad idea in the short term. And since residential and commercial often utilize self-storage spaces, it's not necessarily incongruous with the residential and commercial development. But, you know, the board has the facts before it, and you are free to, you know, in my mind, it's a judgment call one way or the other. So I don't want to tell you what, which way to go, but I think that the board has the ability to go either way that they're comfortable with, with the facts that it has before it. Probably not the answer you wanted, Peter.
Typical attorney answer, right? Can I have a, can I just add something with respect to the comments from the business owner down the street? The comprehensive plan is not limited to just residential and recreational uses. If they conveniently left out the fact that, besides the recreational uses, they also talk about restaurants, retail, office, and service commercial uses. So the comp plan doesn't say just residential, just recreational. I want to make it clear that they also talk about restaurant, retail, office, and service commercial uses. So I don't think it is contrary to the entire sentence. You know, certainly if you want to pull a phrase or a couple of words, maybe. But if you read the entire sentence, there's other commercial uses that the comp plan talks about and contemplates.
All right, thank you. Thank you both for your comments. And now we'll go around the board for, hear what they have to say. Peter?
The previous comment is something, you know, I, when I read through the comprehensive plan as it targeted this particular property, I had the same thought. It seemed to provide some flexibility in terms of the types of uses that could be applied. So unfortunately, you know, that's as far as I'm going to go.
Yep. And Ben?
I'll let you guys get into it a little more, I have nothing to say.
All right, Nicole?
You know, the funny thing is, is I just read an article the other day about storage facilities and whether or not in 2023, we're starting to have a surplus of them. And so the answer was yes, but the answer was also no because we have these baby boomers and these elderly people that are getting out of their houses. They're needing storage space. So are there a lot of them? Yes. Are they needed? Yes. So that's my only comment.
If I could, I would also like to point out for the board that I might give you a different answer if this were talking about new construction. But the fact that this is limited to adaptive reuse of existing buildings, I think tends toward the idea that this is an acceptable adaptive reuse. And there's nothing that says that this is going to be a permanent use at this location. If the applicant comes forward with a global development plan, you know, presumably this building can be repurposed for other things. It's not that, as we know, uses change over time. So I think in the short term, having this infill development as an adaptive reuse is worth, is better for the town than having it be a vacant parcel.
Thanks, Lisa, yeah, it's been vacant for a while now, so a few years.
You were on the comp plan.
I was, along with you.
Along with you, well, I wasn't a voting member. Very involved.
All right, I mean, my two cents, you answered my issues of the pavement repair and the dumpsters and landscaping. That's, that's, covers it all, so I think you have a good plan going forward. So I, I also think it, it, as at least the side, it can be temporary. Mostly what we're building in the, the town these days is apartments. In the last ten years at least, it's all been apartments, apartments. So people need places to store extra things as they downsize. It does feel like there's a lot coming online, but obviously you guys do marketing studies too, so you have to be successful.
So before we make any motions, are we interested in conveying a positive or neutral recommendation to the board?
I think in this case, we should leave it up to the town board. I mean, this is a, a local law amendment, tax amendment.
So neutral.
It's really their call.
Neutral.
Neutral, I agree.
Yeah.
We got two.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess so. It's, the town board has to decide. I mean, I think it's a
Okay.
good use, but it's, it's in their ball.
Okay. I move the planning board determine that the proposed application for extra space self-storage at eighteen seventy-five, eighteen ninety-five South Road would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for type one action dated July twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Moved to the seconded for seeker, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero.
I move the planning board convey a neutral recommendation to the town board regarding the provisions of the proposed local law that would add self-storage as an adapted reuse as a special permit use to the South Hills Center zoning district.
Second. Moved to the seconded for the recommendation, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following one through seven.
Second. Moved to seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero again.
Thank you, Emma.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you back here after, the town board. Next up is one seventy-four in this avenue.
Good evening, I'm on Zoom tonight. I'm celebrating my daughter's birthday, so.
Oh, happy birthday.
Thank you. So I had a, a good meeting with the town staff after our last meeting. I went through a lot of the comments. And I thought we addressed a lot. I did receive some additional comments which are addressed on the latest plan. I could bring it up and share it with you if you'd like.
Uh, yes.
That would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, so you got the sidewalk connection and stuff, that's good.
Yeah, so we have the sidewalk connection showing the utilities, breaking out the sewer as per, as required under the town code. One of Andy's comments was showing the location of the coir patch, so that's back in this area here. This whole hatched area, which you see there, that's where it's going to be put in stabilization. He asked for some rims and inverts on the drainage, I provided that. I had talked or was trying to talk to the water department, finally got ahold of Tom yesterday, showing the detail of the meter pit here, coming in, breaking. And then I'd bring the utilities back to the utility room. Showed some additional landscaping out on the Innes Avenue. I went through Central Hudson's Limited on the type of trees. So it'd be either Japanese maple or eastern rosebud, put three of them out front. This way they don't interfere with their utility lines. Showed some spot grading in the parking lot. As we're redoing the parking lot, I'm going to readjust this section to provide better drainage and got our spot grades here at the handicap to meet ADA requirements. That is a little blown up on the detail here with the spot grades, so I was able to get those covered. I fully understand I need to get the county DPW for a street opening permit. Unfortunately, Brandon Johnson did not pick up the water and sewer lines. He's contacting a design code mark out for the water and sewer so I could show those accurately on the drawings. I met, we met with Carol. I think her letter was good that we responded to her comments. So that's on the drawing. Andy, some of your comments regarding the water and sewer, I put them on. Catch Basin has a sump that, that note's been there for, that will provide protection. I've added additional flows for the uses. I think I'm in pretty good shape with all the comments. I know Kristin had mentioned about the concern with the snow storage. I tried to use this area over here, which is a fairly level area. We get a lot of snow storage here. But I've also added on the drawing that during an extreme snow event, snow will have to be removed off-site. So I've addressed that. Fire department notes, I put his notes here, but I've also shown where the fire department connection, Knox box would be. I was talking with Tim Sicles today on another project and told him where I'd be looking at it, basically where the handicap ramp would be, the ADA ramp. So there would be no vehicles that would park in, in that area. And there'll be more detail on the architectural plan soon as the architect gets the architect plans to me. We are having a lighting study done now currently, so I'm hoping that'll be done and that will meet code. I did show on our elevation, the proposed signs. I just said sign A, B and C, they will meet town code. The only thing I don't have right now is the lettering or who they're going to be. But those signs do comply with the town code, maximum fifty foot in size.
All right. Thanks for your presentation. Kristin?
All right, cool. Thank you for the, the project overview. The application is back on for a public hearing. This is its third appearance, I believe, before the planning board. It's on for seeker review, site plan and architectural review. For seeker purposes, it's an on-listed action. And the planning board declared their intent to be lead agency on December fifteenth. To date, no objections have been received. There are several outstanding site plan review comments. I know the board had expressed concern prior about snow storage and if what's being proposed was adequate. I know there was some concern too about the, the portion of the property, I want to say to the south, but it's not the south, I think it's the west side of the building. There's no storage proposed beyond a sidewalk. And so that, you know, there's concern that you would just then be destroying the carbon sidewalk that is now being placed there or, you know, to be placed. And, you know, also the concern about pushing that water or otherwise down, down gradient at the back of the property. So I think the note, including the note about trucking off-site and, and removing snow storage that way is important. Obviously, the, the business owners are going to want to help facilitate that however, so that they're not losing business. But I really leave that up to the board. The, the site is very constrained, you know, there are only so many places that the snow can go. You know, is it a matter of losing a couple of parking spaces very temporarily and then they truck off-site? You know, again, I would leave that to the planning board to discuss with the applicant. At this point, staff is recommending that the board open the public hearing. And based on, well, I don't want to steal Andy's show, but based on some comments that Andy had provided from the engineering standpoint, you know, we were leaning towards adjourning the public hearing and deferring action. But there is a resolution prepared to close the public hearing, adopt seeker and grant a conditional approval, conditional site plan approval and conduct architectural. There is a draft negative declaration for your consideration for seeker purposes. But I think there still might be some engineering-related concerns, not that they would necessarily impact seeker, but that could, might need some more attention before the board would act. But I won't go any further into that, that is outside of my area of expertise.
Let Andy say that, but if, yeah, the snow storage, being able to truck off-site, that helps with one of our concerns. So maybe other things can be conditional, but we'll see what Andy has to say.
Sure. So it, you know, it, it appears that some of my main comments have been addressed, although we haven't received those, you know, revised plans yet. Spot elevations and grading to, for accessibility and redirecting runoff to that new catch basin that's proposed in the corner. So that's good that, that, that that's being addressed. One of the things that I, I kind of need to know is how the grease trap is going to be installed elevation-wise and connected to the town sewer. Given that, given that the town does not permit internal grease traps, we need to know that the grease trap is going to work. I think it will work, but we, there is a water line that will have to be crossed. And we would just want to make sure that there's no, nothing that would interfere, you know, clearance-wise or, you know, with the slope of the correct line coming out of the grease trap to, to get the line to the grease, the service, new service line to the, the town system. So that's my, that's my biggest concern about approval because we don't want this to be approved and then have to come back, you know, and, and be asked for a consideration of an internal trap. If not, if it's unnecessary, yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but the, I don't know if you know, currently there is an external grease trap on-site. It's where, if you look to the left of where the new building's going to go, it was in that grass area. So there is a grease trap and we know it works. I'm putting a grease trap in the parking lot, so it's, if, if we have one there that actually had a longer slope to get to the sewer, I'm actually shortening up that distance. It, it shouldn't. I, I personally don't see an issue of getting it to work if there's one there now.
Okay, I didn't know, I did not, I was not aware that you had an external trap there now.
It's not, it's not the existing.
Yeah, I'm, I don't, I don't see it on the existing plan, but that's okay. That being the case, I think, you know, as long as we get that information before the plans are signed, I think we can work with them to, to get this approved if the board is, is willing to consider it, so.
It's my priority getting the backflow in the grease trap approved by you and the health department.
Okay, so that, so we could consider conditional then if we work through that, if you guys can work through that offline, all right?
Yep.
Thanks, Andy.
Sure.
It's on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Anyone on Zoom call wish to comment on one seventy-four in this? Or in the room here? So if you're on the Zoom, once again, you can either raise your hand or just unmute yourself and speak up. Not seeing any. All right. I think we're going to hold off on the journey or closing until we get a feel from the board members if they feel like moving forward with a conditional or not. So start with Nicole.
A lot of my questions you've answered. I was just wondering whether or not you still have the U-Haul trucks and the signs still on the property.
Far as I know, they are. I've relayed it to Mr. Beck. And I will relay that again tomorrow morning that they have to be removed immediately.
For our zoning department, if they're not removed, you'll be in violation, so.
Okay, I will make sure that gets done ASAP.
Yep, and the only other thing that you didn't answer, well, it was kind of answered. And it was already kind of brought up with the board here. We're kind of concerned about, you know, dirty snow falling down that hill and essentially finding its way into the creek. So I, I don't know, and, and, you know, some of the other board members here can say whether or not they think it, it needs to be done. But it was brought up that possibly a stockade fence should be put up in the back there so that snow plow doesn't get any dirty snow or contaminants into that creek. And again, like I said, we can, we can talk about it on the board and, and see what other board members think. I know you just said that you, you want to, you know, remove the snow if there is a lot of it off-site. However, if you got a small amount of snow, you might have some, you know, a, a snow plow removal person, you know, possibly wanting to just kind of throw it off that hill there, and that's something that we want to avoid.
Well, currently, the snow does go that way and even the runoff goes down the hill. You, you saw the new storage, snow storage over by the garbage enclosure. There's, that's a fairly level area. I know putting anything on the hill would probably be prohibitive because Carol, Carol's not on, but Kristin, you and Andy could attest, there's blending turtles back in that area. So you've actually asked me to remove the stockade fence to the north of the property. The southern fence is the apartment complex, so I can't remove that. But the idea is to give free roam for the blending turtles. I think putting any type of fencing back there could potentially create an issue.
Yeah, Jeff, I think, I mean, I think it's something that could be Yeah, Jeff, I think, I mean, I think it's something that could be, uh, probably discussed at a staff level. Um, I, I know the fences that you're discussing or you're mentioning right now, but we're actually talking about proposing a fence. I guess you would say perpendicular to the building.
Just on the south.
Yeah, on the south side, yeah, running, I guess it would be west to east.
The snow storage area is.
Yep.
I'm directionally challenged.
North, south.
North, south, see? I told you.
I have no issue showing a, you know, six foot stock, stockade fence there. If you could just, Kristen, if you wouldn't mind just seeing that, uh, Carol would be okay with it?
Yeah, I think, again, I think it's like, I don't want to speak for Carol. Um, and I, I just think that the, the bottom line is that, you know, the board doesn't want to see a mountain of snow being stacked next to the building that ultimately, ultimately makes its way downhill. And again, it's going to potentially destroy the sidewalk and the other curb that you guys are going to be putting in. So, um, you know, again, I, I just think, you know, not, if there was a way to avoid placing a fence just for that purpose, I think that would be preferred.
Plus, the fence doesn't have to run to the ground.
Correct.
You know, can leave plenty of room for the turtles to walk.
That's true.
I will, I will show the fence and I, if the board is okay, I could show those last two spots at the south end of the property as temporary snow storage during events to be, you know, just as a temporary place to store.
Yeah, yeah, I think the biggest.
Yeah, I think that's acceptable.
Yeah, that'll be good. Pushing, pushing it over the bank is, is what, and, you know, effective stabilization of that salted area is an issue.
I'll show it in the corner, two temper, you know, the two temporary spots.
And you can work that out with, uh, Kristen and Carol.
I don't know if stockade is the best answer, maybe something else.
It's never worked out.
Yeah.
Whatever you want, we'll put there.
Thinking something in gold.
It's not my money.
Oh, boy. Um, okay.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay, Ben, anything?
Just in my humble opinion, I drive by there every day. And the existing building on one side, there's a couple of parking spaces. On the other side, there's a little, uh, open area with picnic tables, like, looks like or something there. And where did the snow go now? You know, it's not going to be much different than it is now, except for the parking spaces. So it wasn't a problem until now. I don't see how it's becoming such a big problem. You know, that, that space isn't used for anything. But there will be buildings there, but.
There will be a lot more cars parked in the parking lot with the expansion on the north and south side.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't know. I think, I think you could work it out with staff to figure out where the snow is going to go.
We can, I'm not sure if the snow requirement was back when this was originally, you know, built back, uh, probably in the seventies. This may not have been a thought back then. I, I get what, you know, the boards and the towns thinking on this. So it's just something, yes, we have to work through with the constraints we have.
I'm sure you can work, can work something out.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I do also just want to point out that the, the zoning department had previously flagged that there would be a variance required, but, um, regarding a side yard variance, related to a setback requirement. Um, I actually do not have the number handy, but, um, I do know that, that actually is at the discretion of the planning board now. It's, it's not, it would not require a variance, so this board actually had, um.
Was that from the apartments, you mean?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, yeah, there's still the, the grass area between. All right, Peter?
That was on the south end of the property, correct?
Yes. This will be a big improvement for them probably.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, as long as it's a note on the plan about trucking snow. Yeah, I, yeah, I'm happy to see, happy to see new businesses moving my, in myself. So I'm in favor of doing a conditional at this point. So I move, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
I move the planning board hereby determine that 174 Innis Avenue application would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and that no environmental impact will be required for season, reasons set forth in the seeker negative declaration for an unlisted action dated July twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Moved to the seconded for seeker, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for 174 Innis Avenue, subject to the following. Respond the comments to planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included, but not limited to the following, one through eleven.
Can I, can I just add twelve to specifically say, work out the fence? Fence or no fence with the, with the staff?
So, yeah, eleven is planning board comments, so I'll just add it under that. Yep.
Okay. Okay, now. Yeah. Second. Moved to seconded. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Great. Thanks and good luck with the project.
Do we want to conduct architectural review?
Architectural.
I don't think.
Jeff, do you have the, the drawings, like the architecture drawings? Or will you have to come back separately for that?
Uh, I'm going to have to, there's, uh, the other consultant I told you is working on the architecturals. I gave you what the building looks like. You know, it's, and it sort of matching, just a cleaner though. But, yeah, I think, I think, uh, we'll get those hopefully in a couple of weeks to you.
So probably come back, um, we need that before building permit. All right, so, um, so just keep that in mind, but that would be it.
You come back to the planning board, I just want to make that clear, for the architectural review component.
Okay. And, uh, and if you have any information on the signage at that time, it'd be great as well.
Okay.
Great. Thanks.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of adjournments, uh, sixty-eight Van Wagner Road. I moved the planning board adjourned the public hearing to August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Moved to seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Eight Tucker Drive. I moved the planning board adjourn the public hearing to August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Moved to seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
Mr. Chairman, can I just address eight Tucker for two seconds for you to give you an update?
Sure.
Nothing more than, uh, we've been working with the D E C. We're finally reached a point where we're getting plans back to them for their final blessing. Um, and hopefully we can get that resolved quick enough to get right back to you. But we are moving along with it. I just didn't want you to think it was sitting out in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, I know you're waiting on the D E Cs.
Yep, so they're, they're, yes, they've, they've finally, uh, adjusted back down to where we needed to be to help work through it, so.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks for that info.
Thank you.
And next one up is Stratford Farms Town Homes. I move we, planning board adjourn the public hearing to August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Moved to seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. At this time, I move we allow public comment on any other items on tonight's agenda and we'll stick to our three minute limit.
Second.
Moved to the seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Anyone in the room or on the Zoom call wish to comment on any of the remaining agenda items? Looks like everybody's staying muted. So seeing none, I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved to the seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Habitat for Humanity is up next.
Hello. This is Maureen Lashley from Habitat. Hi, everyone. And I'm Amy Monterrey from Dance to Cross. Uh, we are proposing a five lot subdivision with a cluster layout. It's five proposed lots. They range in size from about five thousand square feet to seven thousand square feet. The area is on central water and central sewer. The Habitat for Humanity, this is on Sunset Avenue. The Habitat for Humanity model is that the homes need to be owner occupied for thirty years for the life of the mortgage. And if, in the event that they can't be owner occupied, it goes back to Habitat. So I know that's a big concern in that neighborhood that a lot of houses are turning into marist housing, so. These would all be owner occupied. Maureen can speak to that more. We are, because it's a clustered subdivision, we need the board to kind of bless the, the layout. The modification of the lots are, uh, the lots are smaller in size than they should be for the R twenty zoning district, but the board is allowed to allow those, those size requirements. So the submission is not complete because if the layout isn't good and we have to change it, then it's a lot of rebranding. And so we didn't do the stormwater pollution prevention plan yet because we just need a blessing on the layout to move forward. So if the lots need to be a different size or if the density is not to the board's liking, then we'll go from there.
Okay, thanks, Amy. Eric's not here, but you.
Yeah, I'm covering for Eric, yeah. Unfortunately, Eric is, uh, not able to be here tonight. So, um, the, uh, as Amy mentioned, this is on for, uh, pre-application discussion really at this point. Ultimately, it will need seeker, um, review and it'll be considered a major subdivision for the purposes of our code because it would result in six lots, um, five new and then, and then, uh, the remainder. The, the, generally speaking, the, the site is, you know, there are a lot of topographic features and other, uh, issues on the site that make, uh, the cluster layout, um, kind of makes sense uh, compared to more, a more conventional kind of a, a layout. They are using, you know, the area of the site that is most level and, uh, closest to the existing infrastructure. So we think that there's some merit to that, um, looking at the cluster provisions. Some of the things that will need to be discussed going through this are, you know, the, the disposition of the open space, whether that, uh, is going to be donated to, you know, a third party, whether it becomes town property, which we don't think the town would necessarily be particularly interested in, whether it be kept, um, by one or more of the lots. There's a number of different ways that that can be addressed, but we'll have to work through that. They are proposing a, uh, to dedicate the road. There's been some preliminary discussion with the highway department about that. And, and, you know, so a lot of things to be worked through. For tonight's purposes, um, the only action that the board is, uh, asked to consider is to declare its intent to be lead agency. And obviously to discuss, uh, your general, um, thoughts about the layout with the applicant this evening.
That's right. Thanks, Mike. Yeah, there had been a previous plan, I'll note, that, uh, had four houses and used a lot more of the, of the land there. And this is more of a, a smaller cluster.
Yeah.
So we have to make sure that the fire department, uh, is okay with that size turnaround and that kind of thing we got to look into. Let's go around the board for.
Andy's, Andy's on too.
Oh, yeah. Andy, let you start off with that.
Sure. Um, yeah, so you mentioned the, the turnaround. Um, the town, town code does require a, a little bit larger cul-de-sac that would need to be shown. There's also provision in the, um, in the subdivision code about the length of a dead end street, which this would qualify as that limits it to four hundred feet. There may be some flexibility with that. We'd have to talk to the fire department to make sure they're okay with that length and probably get a formal approval for that. Also looking for some, um, uh, details on, on the length of the curves and, and, um, the vertical, uh, design of the, of the road to verify that it meets, uh, town requirements. You know, we mentioned that the, uh, the SWIP hasn't provided yet, which, you know, is, is, is generally okay except that, um, you know, they are proposing to reroute, um, some existing drainage to, um, a previously designed stormwater management practice. So we're going to need, although, although the, the project, um, under the Speedy's general permit, because it's residential development, it would only require a basic SWIP with no permanent controls. Because of that modification of that existing pond, we're going to need an evaluation of that, which is going to amount to a, a, um, a full, you know, design of the SWIP to make sure that that's, that works properly. I guess the only other issue, you know, the water, water for the project should be a concern. They're proposing to extend the, the water main to the end of the cul-de-sac with a hydrant, um, which is, which is fine. The, probably the more difficult question is what to do with the sewer. They're currently proposing a central, um, centralized sewage pump station that would pump up the hill to the, um, existing town facilities. An alternative may, may be available to that, but we'd have to kind of work that out with a low pro, uh, potential for a low pressure sewer system. But we'd have to talk to the developer and the town sewer department and kind of, um, work through to see if, see how that might work, if that's a possibility. So, um, that's it for me now.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Yeah, I know sewer wa, sewer was a big discussion of the previous proposal years ago and that, uh, there was concerns over, you know, what happens if the power goes off and make sure it's, things can work still, backup or whatever. All right, let's go around for additional comments from board members. Ben, anything?
The only thing is that cul-de-sac being small, either on a cul-de-sac, a garbage truck and a fire truck can't get around it, so, uh, they manage. I mean, I don't think it could be a serious problem, even though it's not cool because the access is there, they can get to it.
Okay. Just have to make, if it is to be dedicated to town, is that, is it become a town road, is that the idea?
That's the intent.
Okay, so then it has, has to meet certain standards that way, I guess, as Andy has pointed out. Peter?
First, Maureen, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you do. You know, we live in a parallel universe. You know, uh, in twenty ten, some friends of mine came to me and said, listen, we're going to launch a not-for-profit to provide housing for women, single women with small children. And last year, we surpassed our fifty thousandth night, unfortunately, providing housing and nourishment for people who otherwise would, would not have the means to, to survive. And people generally have no idea what's going on and it's happening in our own community. So thank you so much for that. Also, thank you for your store because it's like, if I ever have a bad day, I go to your store, it's like Santa's workshop. You know, and, and all your coworkers, the volunteers are like Santa's elves. I mean, they're happy and clearly they enjoy what they're doing. And I, again, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you do. And you, and you're all volunteers like, like we are. And it's, I think it's wonderful, so thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
This is not, clearly, as you know, is not an easy site. But, you know, I know that we'll do everything we can, you know, to help, uh, walk you through it. And you couldn't have picked a better advisor.
We think so. Thanks, Peter.
Great, thank you. And Nicole?
Yeah, I mean, uh, obviously it's, this is definitely needed in our community. I think that the site, I think it can work. As far as that, um, open space, it sounds like the town doesn't want it. So I don't know what you want to do with that. If you want to give it to one or two of the other parcels or if you just want to leave it, I don't really know what you want to do there. I saw that there was something about wavering of sidewalks and, and lighting on that road. Would there be no lighting?
The intent is to keep the cost down for the infrastructure, so.
Yeah.
Uh, there, we're really pushing for no sidewalk and I, I spoke to the highway supervisor.
Yeah, I think, I think no sidewalk, but I'm just wondering lighting, like, would you really not want any lighting on the, on that road?
I guess it would be dark there, right? There's nothing.
Yeah.
Maybe.
I mean, it, it could just be like one or two. I mean, I don't think there'd have to be a lot, but I'm.
Is it planned for underground electric or? Is it planned for underground electric or, or how do you electric turn down the street?
I mean, if you're going to go through the infrastructure installment, you might, you know, it's.
Yeah, I know, I know. And, and I was reading up on that, too. The people that are getting the homes are pretty much helping them to build them, right? Pretty much, so.
Four hundred hours of sweat equity, including their mortgage.
Wow, that's amazing. Yeah.
It's a.
Yeah, so I don't know. I guess it's something we can talk about going forward.
I mean, I'll say, I like the fact that it's, you know, comparing with the old previous plan where the lots were all spread out into the whole site. This is better to have them consolidated, I think, at the entrance.
Yeah.
I did have a question of if you looked at, I don't know how far back that's going, the whole walk, the whole rail trails building, the whole ramp down from Fulton Avenue. And I don't know if that changes how it interacts with your topography here or if there's any way to put even a, a walking path over to the rail trail from, from the cul-de-sac, perhaps? That might be.
We'll look at that, but it's not in the interest of Habitat to keep it as their, put a trail on their property. And to put the open space with one of, want any of the other properties are spread, spread it out, that raises the taxes on the property and that's, they're on such a tight budget.
Yep. I don't know if there's a.
Maybe the county will.
If county or D, or DLC or something.
We'll just give it to the county.
Keep it as open space.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a few different options, but we have to talk about them. I mean, I just, you know, I think the assumption, I don't, I'm not, I don't know that the town won't take it. I just, there's not a compelling reason that it would, so just, you know, let's.
Isn't Habitat a not-for-profit?
We are.
So then you wouldn't be, it wouldn't be taxable anyway. You wouldn't have to pay property taxes.
That's correct.
If you, if you owned it, if you owned it, that would be, that would be true.
Off the rolls.
Right, right.
But if it were to be distributed.
Right, once it transfers into the ownership of the individuals, then it becomes taxable.
Right.
Correct.
Yes, but you could retain ownership.
That is an option as well.
So I mean, it's something you should consider.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, so that keeps the lot small for, for tax purposes.
Right.
Yeah.
That'll be good.
It's also, I would have a discussion with the assessor about what the difference might be in adding those square feet if it's vacant land and if it may or may not be subject to something like a conservation easement. I don't think it would increase the taxes that much, but those are all avenues to explore.
I think it, it does need to be a conservation easement, doesn't it, as part of the cluster subdivision?
It does, yeah.
All right, I'd like the cluster.
Everyone likes the cluster overall, right? And I think that makes a lot of sense here.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, when I compared it to the old plan.
So I'll move forward with this layout and modify the road as I need to and then put the drainage together.
Thing my biggest concern with the cluster was how, you know, the, make sure that meets, the cul-de-sac meets the town standards for, as Ben said, for the garbage truck or others to turn around.
Yeah. And it works out nicely with the snow storage area onto the open space property.
Yep. All right.
I move the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action. Authorize the planning department circulation of a notice of said intent, copy of the EF and a copy of the application to all involved agencies and identified interested agencies.
Second. Move to the seconded for lead agency. Call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero.
I move the planning board for further action on this application pending establishment of lead agency and subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included up and not limited to the following, one through thirteen.
Second. Move to the seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just want to make sure. No, just, we're getting ringing again and I just want to make sure that that microphone is on because it's facing outside.
Right next up, we have Landville. It's just peachy.
Yeah, Mr. Albano was here before. Oh, there you, oh, there we go. Okay. All right, and is there anyone with you, Keith?
No, unfortunately, my engineer is overseas for the calendar. He'll be back next week.
Oh, okay. All right. So do you want to at least give us just a quick overview of what you intend to like to do?
Yes, I'm looking to add two lots. That'll be three lots with my existing lot. One would be a five-acre lot and one would be a ten-acre lot, which would leave me roughly twenty-eight acres left to my existing lot.
Okay.
All right. Pretty straightforward.
The first pump engine, there's some concerns, I guess the biggest concern that I read through the email was a cluster subdivision. I, I don't really believe that this applies to our particular subdivision, but I don't know. There's, it's just the one lot, my existing lot and two other lots, one being, like I said, ten acres and one being five acres. And I meet, of course, all of the setbacks and road curmages and I meet all of that.
Clusters also usually require sewer access potentially, so.
There, I think there's two things related to the cluster. One is that it's, it's required that we, that it be considered, that the planning board consider that option. So that's, that's why it's mentioned in the, in the report. But the other, I think, was because, I guess, one of the two lots, there, there's some concerns about the access to it, you know, through the, through the wetland there. There was just a thought about whether or not it would make better sense to, to cluster, but I don't know that it necessarily does in this case. That's something we can, we can talk about, but. All right, Keith, did you have anything else on, that you wanted to talk, or shall I go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so this is on for preliminary discussion. Again, Eric reviewed it and can't be here tonight, so I'll do my best. You know, there, there were a number of comments provided about the, the wetland from, from Carol Knapp. I believe Keith also met with Carol when she was on-site, so that's good. There was discussion about how that access would work, so that's, I think, the northernmost lot, which would be Lot Two, you know, there are some questions about it. And also, I'm sure Andy will talk a little bit about the slopes and some other concerns related to Lot Two. So, but tonight, we're really on just for lead agency intent. So there's, that's the only action that's being requested tonight. There are a lot of things that still need to be cleaned up, but it is a fairly simple subdivision, with the exception of, again, some of that, that access point for Lot Two. So maybe we'll ask Andy to go from, go from there?
Yep, yeah, there's steep slopes and wetlands and it's all downhill from the Peachville Park, so.
Right.
Got to take, to take a look at that. Andy, do you have?
Yeah, so you hit on it pretty well. The Lot Two is really the, the, the access to Lot Two is really our primary concern between the slope of the driveway, the length of the driveway, the requirements for that within both the town code and the New York State Fire Code. You know, the maximum slope of the, of the road is, is allowed is ten percent. I think you're at eleven. There's a box beam guide rail that's along the side of the road that will have to be adjusted and modified to allow this access to go through. It also looks like a culvert, culvert will be required, which will need to be, you know, C sizing and design grading to allow that culvert to be installed. Let's see. As far as, you know, so that, there's, like, as I said, there's a number of comments about that showing the grading for that that needs to be addressed. The, the, the lot, Lot Two is proposed to be connected to a water line that is proposed to be installed to serve Duchess County water, Duchess County facilities at the north end of Peach Road. My understanding is that water line has not been installed yet. So, you know, obviously, you would need to wait for that line to be installed or extended to meet yourself to serve Lot Two. The other concern is pressure. The, you know, you're at the, the top end of the town's pressure service, service system and the elevation change at the top of that hill for Lot Two, you're going to lose quite a bit. So you may need to look at that and see if some sort of a, you know, individual booster station or something of that nature would be required to serve that lot. That, those are kind of the major comments that I have at this time. You know, obviously, Carol also mentioned that a town wetland permit would likely be required to cross through that wetland area for the roof as well.
All right, thanks, Andy.
With that box beam, we're not close to that guardrail of the driveway. We're with probably at least fifty feet from that guardrail.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? I had a trouble.
The box beam guardrail he's, that was brought out.
Okay.
In the email, the driveway does not come close to that.
Okay. Fifty feet away at least. All right, let's go around the board for, for comments. Peter? Nothing? Nicole?
There was a comment of possible land for a public park. I don't know if that's something that we were looking into or not.
Well, that's.
Yeah, no, I think.
That would be in lieu of a rec fee.
Right, I think in this case, there'd probably just be the rec fees for each of the lots.
Okay.
Right, because there's not going to be a public park land dedication.
All right, let's see, what else did I have here? So that it's forty-three acres, is that correct? In all?
Total.
For the total? Forty-three?
Yeah, it was forty-four. Forty-three, almost forty-four.
Okay. Can I ask you a question? Why only three lots?
Those living two houses were both my doors.
Okay.
One on each side of my house.
Okay. All right, I know that our environmental consultant had some concerns, but I believe you received all those comments, right?
Right.
Yeah, she talked to him outside, I think.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's anything else.
Well, Ben, have any comments on this?
Nothing.
I guess my only comment is, I, you know, we talked about a cluster versus this and I, because of all the different slopes and wetlands, I'm not sure a cluster would work here either. So spread out is more easily done, I think. Maybe Andy can say otherwise, but, but when you cluster, then.
Sorry, Carl, what was, to cluster this lot?
If you cluster, then you're going to need, if things are tighter, don't you need sewer? Or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's the problem is that with a, you know, cluster subdivision, you run out of room for septic systems and there is no sewer in this area.
Because of steep slopes and wetlands, it's tough to find a spot where they can all cluster, I think.
Right, right.
So I think that's the way to go and we're ready to kick it off with the lead agency.
Okay. I move the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate environmental review of the proposed action as an unlisted action. Authorize the planning department circulation of notice of said intent, a copy of the EF and a copy of the application to all involved agencies and identified interested agencies.
Second. Move to the seconded for lead agency. Call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero.
I move the planning board for further action on this application pending establishment of lead agency and subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received in town departments and agencies, said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included up and not limited to the following, one through eleven.
Second. Move to the seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. All right, I guess you know our biggest concerns with the wetlands and stuff, so see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Reed Road Lot Line Revision.
Good evening. Proceed. My name is Taylor Palmer, law firm, Cutie and Fader. On behalf of the applicants, Reed Innovation Center Annex LLC and Reed Innovation Center Annex Two LLC, they're the owners of the properties at eleven and fifteen Reed Road. Tonight, I am joined on Zoom by our project surveyor, Steve Miller, with Beatty and Watson. As we discussed during our initial appearance before your board back in June, the applicants are proposing a lot line realignment. It's just proposing to redraw the property line between the abutting residential properties at eleven and fifteen Reed Road. Since we were last before you, we referred over to the zoning board and on July tenth, we received the required area variance relief for the presently non-conforming eleven Reed Road property. It was specifically for lot size, width and frontage. We also submitted responses to your engineers' comments and then we revised the plan sets to incorporate minor non-substantive updates and we have since received confirmation that all of our outstanding comments have been resolved. So at this time, like, Steve and I are certainly happy to address any questions or comments the board may have, but otherwise, that is for our presentation tonight.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Kristen?
Yeah, so this is relatively straightforward. It's on for Lot Line Revision Review. Seeker, for seeker purposes, it's a type-two action requiring no further environmental review. The applicant had provided a coastal consistency form for review. Staff reviewed it, so there's a resolution regarding coastal consistency in your packet. The Lot Line Revision Review language is largely, again, just from the chapter for Lot Line Reviews from our town code. I will point out that the resolution regarding the conditional Lot Line Approval actually includes the maximum time permitted by the town code for filing, so you would have through November to file. Other than that, it's relatively straightforward and, you know, staff would recommend that the board move forward with a seeker determination, provide a determination for waterfront consistency and also adopt a resolution to grant, oh my goodness, grant conditional Lot Line Revision Approval with a time extension.
All right, thanks, Kristen. Let's just go for any last comments. Ben?
No.
Peter?
The application is complete.
No, did Andy have anything on that or no?
Anything remaining, Andy? Just a lot line or?
No, all of our comments have been addressed.
And I have nothing further myself.
Okay. All right, I move the planning board determine that the proposed, proposal meets the criteria for seeker type-two action pursuant to seeker part six-one-seven dot five C sixteen and no further environmental reviews required.
Second. Move to the seconded for seeker, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero.
I move the planning board determine that the Reed Road Lot Line Revision for eleven and fifteen Reed Road is consistent with the town of Poughkeepsie's approval for a local waterfront revitalization program.
Second. Move to the seconded for LWRP, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional Lot Line Revision Approval and also grant a one-time sixty-day time extension as permitted by town code as said approval for Monday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, from four to Friday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, subject to the following, one through three.
Second. Move to the seconded for conditional, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
All right. Good luck, take care. Vassar College is back.
Brian? Hello. Good evening, Brian Swartout with Vassar College. We're here today about the Institute approved just under a year or so ago, or maybe it's just over a year ago, actually. But what we didn't have at the time was a signage plan and so we're under construction. Been working now for a little rate months, hoping to be fully enclosed by the end of the summer and open by next summer. And we wanted to bring forth the signing plan for all of you to go through. Appreciate the staff time that's gone into this. We've gone through a couple of reviews with it just to make sure we could get it as good as. Appreciate the staff time that's gone into this. We've gone through a couple of reviews with it just to make sure we could get it as good as possible before we meet with you. And I'll let Ken kind of take you through. Good evening, uh, Ken Casametto from LRC.
There we go. Nice turtle.
Gotta have a turtle.
Is that blading?
No, 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 wrong ocean. Uh, good evening. So, uh, we're here for, uh, several signs that weren't really on the plan. Uh, we have two monolith signs that we're proposing, one at the entrance on College Avenue and one along Raymond Avenue, uh, per the code. There, it needs to be added at entrance, you'll see that furthering, uh, but there's one proposed along Raymond Avenue, so that pass provides down Raymond Avenue, understand where to make the turn to get in because there's no access on Raymond Avenue. Uh, we have one wayfinding sign internal to help guide people. As you know, when we talked before, it was talking about alumni and where, where you would go to drop off and that, and so we have a wayfinding sign in there. Uh, and then the rest are really small, uh, building identification signs. The first sign, uh, is twenty-one square feet, uh, it has concrete, or sorry, stone base. It's only six feet tall. It is, sorry, I'm trying to move one little thing on there. It is seven feet tall with the base on the bottom.
Okay.
But, um, it's three foot six wide, very small, not a big sign. Uh, this is the one sign that will be located on yeah, the entrance, sorry. Computer is not, there we go.
Yeah, that's right.
There we go. Sorry, it's right on the entrance on College. That's our primary sign for the entry into the site. Based on the location of the sign from the road, because the road is set back, uh, from the property line, we're looking for a variance to keep it close, as close as we can to the actual street line, so you can get good visibility. The further we push it back, if we push it back, the ten feet off the property line, it really starts to inhibit some of the visibility with landscaping and everything else that's proposed in there. It does not need a variance for size, only for the, it's, uh, location and from the property line. The second monolith, the same, uh, basic size, little different language on it for more directional, uh, to where to go. This would be located on Raymond Avenue.
Just a quick question, why does that first one have a diagonal arrow for College Avenue? Would College Avenue be straight ahead or?
So on this one, the College Avenue is right, so as you're coming down, when you're driving down Raymond Avenue, it's pointing to the.
This is the one on Raymond.
This is the one on Raymond, correct. The one on, uh.
College, okay, there's the college.
College View or College Ave is just a right to turn into Park, so you know where to go in. This one is, is the right to go down College Ave, so that you would see the second sign.
I get it.
Uh, and again, based on the trees, the location, putting that sign further back into the site with the right of way and the distance from the, uh, asphalt there and, and with parking and everything in between, we're trying to keep it as visible as possible. I know one of the engineer's comments was looking at the trees. Um, we've done extensive amount of preparation to prepare and avoid these trees to maintain them. So we will definitely be working around, uh, with the landscaper and the arborist on how to install a small foundation for this appropriately to not impact those trees. The, uh, third sign is a wayfinding sign as you come into the site, right before the corner of the inn. Uh, basically looking to go, again, one-way sign to show where you're going for the drop-off, parking to the left with alumni to the left. Uh, what we also tried to do here is you'll see some of the other signs in the background. Condense some of the typical signs that you would see, a one-way sign. Uh, and a parking sign that would be a standalone sign to reduce some of the clutter in the parking lot and trying to put it in a small area here. This sign is, uh, five foot by two foot eight, the actual signage is only six feet tall. Uh, it, there does require a variance when you look at the square footage because of the whole face of the sign is much larger than the three foot that's allowed. Uh, but when you break down the signs down to the actual lettering and signs, it's, it's much smaller at only a little over three point four total square footage you actually have the signs. It's just the space in between to make it appropriately look right. The, the last one, this is probably the easiest one, it meets the requirements for wayfinding. It's one point seven five feet, basically showing if we were coming out, how to handicap accessible to get up to the alumni house. Switching over to the building signs, uh, this is looking from the Raymond Avenue intersection, uh, towards the building with alumni back. You remember this view during the, uh, planning board process when we looked at the residential, you'll see the crossroads is the small lettering, it's only four and a half square feet and it's eight inches tall. There's no variance required for that signage, uh, where it's located there. The second sign is actually painted on the glass and does not require any permit of the inn, the restaurant name. There is a potential for a change in the name, uh, of the crossroads. Uh, but we're gonna work within the actual square footage that is currently being approved. Uh, the second is a sign on the door or the door here, which is the one we talked about, the third is the one on the north end of the building where you would be walking down Raymond to see the restaurant area. Again, it's a small sign, very, uh, unobtrusive, we, we felt that uh, we took a lot of time to make the signs work into the architecture that the board has worked so hard to get to work with us on. On the backside, there's a fourth sign which does require variance because it technically doesn't face a roadway, which is the crossroad sign, as you'll see it on the rear entrance there. It's located on the side of the building. It does face portion of the parking lot. Um, if we were to put the sign on the end of the inn, where it would directly face the parking lot, it would basically bring people to a place where they can't get into the building. So it didn't make sense to put a sign on that side. Um, so that's why the crossroad signs we proposing inside in there. And that's in a quick, short version, as quick as I can make it through.
Yep. Pretty succinct. Uh, any comments, Eric?
Thanks for the short presentation. Um, yeah, no, this is on for site, it's an amended site plan because of the, you know, the, um, the, the freestanding signs. Um, and they're also needed to come and present an overall comprehensive signage plan, uh, which, uh, seems to be very thoughtful. We are recommending that you waive the site plan public hearing, uh, and adopt a resolution to grant conditional amended site plan approval. Eric, of course, wrote up the language and it's very lengthy, so whoever reads it, I'm sorry. And, um, that's pretty much it. They do know that they have to, I think, I think you're on the agenda for August already for the ZBA, so they'll, they'll be on for some minor variances there from the ZBA, but, uh, assuming that they get those, I think it should be also.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike. I'll start off by I move that we waive the site plan public hearing.
Second.
Moved to the seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Let's go around the board for comments. Nicole?
I don't really have any, the signs look great.
Thank, thank you.
Ben?
Just the lighting on these, saw some LED lighting on some of the signs.
Yes. Uh, there, there's, uh.
It's not, uh, not glaring out or?
No, not at all. There, there's a minor LED bar that's at the bottom that's lit to this, right to the stone.
Lights up?
Yes.
From the bottom up?
Yes.
Angled in towards the sign.
Correct, direct, directly at the sign, not, not vertical, but right at the sign.
Except for that one that goes out to the parking lot.
That one doesn't have any lighting. The, the building ID signage, uh, I believe they're internally lit.
That's right.
Oh, okay.
The, the crossroad signs, just with small LEDs internal.
That's it?
As long as they're below three thousand Kelvin.
Yes.
Just her. And, uh, Peter, anything? And they, they look good to me as well, so.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Vassar Inn and Institute signage site plan application dated six twenty twenty twenty-three. With attached materials included sheets SP three site signage and exterior site monolith and building identification details thirteen pages as a prepared by Frederick Fisher and Partners. As additions to approved site plan for Vassar College Institute for the Liberal Arts, revised seven-eight twenty twenty-two, signed seven-twenty-six twenty twenty-two by the planning board chairman, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to re-review by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included up and not limited to the following one through four.
Second.
Moved to the seconded, Greg, conditional, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Friendly Honda is up next. Architectural review. Who's on for that?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Rich, we're on JUC. Can you guys hear me clearly?
Yep, I can hear you, Rich, great.
Excellent, I'm joined tonight with, uh, by Dennis Reguso from, uh, SRA, they're the project architect. Uh, Brent Kosik from BBL, the general contractor, construction manager, and Eric Khan from Friendly Honda, great. Um, we're here tonight, uh, second appearance before the board. We are here for a, uh, site, um, not site plan, but an ARB approval. Um, do you guys mind if I share my screen real quick? I'll go through the project.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Oh, I just had it up, okay. Let's go this way. So we're here tonight, um, we're proposing a new canopy over the pro- over the, uh, front of the site. I'm pretty sure you guys saw that before. Hold on, just a second, let me just fix this. Apologies. I know, we should know what we're doing by now. Just a moment.
Looks great, thank you.
Technical difficulties, please, Tim.
Yeah, sorry about that. Sorry about that, okay. So, here we go. So what we're proposing is we're proposing this new canopy over the site. That leads us to need to do a little bit of, uh, had to tweak a little bit of our parking over here. Um, add it some additional landscaping in response to the town comments. We tweaked the ADA parking in response to, uh, the town engineer's comments. And, um, that's for the most part, the, you know, pretty much it for the project. We did receive the comments from the town, we've responded to the town's comments. We got a couple more comments regarding the site lighting, which we're prepared to, um, speak to. And, uh, additional comments regarding the signage over here for the ADA parking, which we'll be able to respond to. We just have to pretty much move these signs out of the eighty, uh, ADA person, make this a little bit wider. Uh, one of the comments was regarding questioning the, the site lighting and making sure that it doesn't bleed off the site, so what we did is we took an analysis that was done by the, for the additional canopy lights and laid it on top of our site. And, uh, we were able to illustrate or demonstrate that we don't have the, uh, more than point-two-foot candles of light at the property line. Um, it's a fairly minor additional lighting that's proposed, it's all under canopy light. That's pretty much it. It's a pretty straightforward project where we're gonna be getting rid of the former barrel that was in front of the site and proposing this new canopy over here. Do you guys have any questions about the project?
All right, we may, we'll see what people think going around the board. I'll start with Kristen.
Oh, yeah, so, um, it's on for, uh, seeker review and architectural review, um, because it's architecture, it's a type-two action, it's requiring, uh, sorry, requiring no further environmental review. Um, we did have a few comments, uh, outstanding for architectural review purposes, but it was nothing that I didn't think was insurmountable at a staff level review, um, which is why I ended up preparing a resolution that, um, would allow the planning board to either defer action um, or grant conditional architectural review. Um, typically, you're either just kind of granting it or not. Um, but I would, I would say that, um, if the board felt comfortable, staff could probably work with the applicant through just the couple of minor things that are outstanding, and so that's why we would make it a conditional approval. Um, the only thing that I, and I'm sorry, I was listening, but my brain is mush at this point of the day. Um, I don't know if you could speak to just the architectural, like the facade aesthetic, um, that blue bar to the left side of the building um, had previously been proposed within the sidewalk area, and there was some concern there, but I think you guys have actually addressed that completely. Oh, you're on mute.
We did, we illustrated that, I think, a little bit better over here.
Yeah.
Where it's kind of off to the side of the island. Um, like I said, we took all the comments that the board had put together at the planning board meeting as well as the, uh, the, the comment memos, and we did what we could to, you know, respond to them, and I, I think we, I think we.
Yeah, it was just that at that prior meeting, they had, uh, there was some concern and discussion about that other, the other side of the building, um, blocking the sidewalk, but I think that that's been addressed, um, and so, you know, it would be my recommendation to, uh, grant a conditional architectural approval, um, if the board was in agreement.
All right, thanks Kristen. Let's, uh, go around the board for their thoughts. Uh, Nicole?
Uh, you guys have been in front of the board before, um, for other projects, and one thing that stood out to me, and maybe with this particular project, it doesn't really, um, have anything to do with it, but um, your landscaping, um, seems to be lacking. That's, that's the only way I can really put it. I don't know what can be done with that. Um, I know that you have certain trees proposed and certain small shrubs proposed, um, but they, they don't seem to I don't know, do the job, I guess, is, is what I'm trying to say. Uh, and, and I don't know if the board agrees with me or not, that's something we can talk about. Um, other than that, I don't, I don't think there was too much more that I had to say.
Man, I, and as I'm looking at this rendering, I don't think that shows the latest landscaping that they proposed on the.
No, we're, we're proposing some additional, um, oh my goodness, just a moment, we're proposing some additional, uh, black chokeberry and some fountain grasses along the front over here to try to liven things up, provide a little bit of color and a little bit of height. And then there is an existing tree over in this vicinity that's gonna be removed, so we are proposing to put it, you know, put a new red, red maple, I know, off to the side. We're kind of limited on this site because we do have to maintain separation from septic systems, and it's tough to you know, there's not a lot of places to put a trees, put trees. We also don't have a lot of room along the front of this property line here because you could see a good portion of it is within the DOT right of way.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Ben?
Um, I'm gonna give up my time to miss the finale.
I don't really have much to say. I, I think you, you responded to any concerns or comments we had in the prior meeting. And I think it's ready for a conditional approval. All right. Thanks, Peter. My, my only question is, you know, make, is the new lighting, uh, hundred to three thousand Kelvin temperature for LEDs? That's what we, we don't want anything that glares too, too much.
Understood, understood. We'll, we'll provide the full lighting package to you guys. I don't believe, I've been almost positive it's under the three thousand, because that's kind of ingrained in my, uh, my mind. I've, I've been for you guys a couple of times, and I know that's the standard.
Yeah, that's, that's been our town standard at this point, so. All right, thank you.
Okay. I move the planning board grant conditional architectural review approval on Friendly Honda showroom architectural review and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following one through eight.
Second.
Moved to the seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Work through the, there's a couple of conditions with Kristen.
Thank you.
AP Packaging. Long time no see.
Good evening, Ken Casametto for the applicant. So, uh, we're here tonight, uh, we've gone through essential approval.
So we're here tonight, we've gone through essential approvals, we've been under construction, didn't receive an area variance for the height extension. But we're here tonight for the architectural approval of an extension of the building that was granted in July of 2023. Building, as we know, is an industrial heavy district. The location of the extension is off on the right here with the arrow. As you can see, this is taken from inside the site, not from the road. There's an extensive tree line.
Yeah, you can see it.
On the road, you can see it. So it's the same material that's used on the other side of the street, excursion route, that was done by building permit in April. It's a 1,484 by square foot expansion. And we received the height variance for it. It's 65 feet tall total. So we're here tonight for the architectural review. Again, it's the same panel, it's matching, it's concord green, that matches the side of the building, heavy metal, like, back out individual cutings.
All right.
Can they slide into each other like that, right?
Yes.
That's so cool.
Yeah, they lock in.
All right, Kim, thanks.
It is.
Any comments?
Yeah, not much really to say here. Just as Kim pointed out, the ZBA did approve the height variance, so it's just on for architectural. Seems like it fits.
Any structural concerns, Andy, or anything?
Not for me. Nope.
All right. Looks like a big machine they got.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure, but it needs the length to cool off, you put it inside. Why I understand.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's kind of industrial, I'm good with. Any, anybody have any other comments?
No.
No.
I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
That place is making good use of that space.
Yeah.
They are enjoying being in the city.
Oh, good.
That's great.
And expanding and keep growing, so that's a good thing.
More jobs.
That's great.
Thank you.
You too. Thanks.
Thanks, Kim. All right. It appears I've written a letter.
Yeah, the next up is the Duchess Land Conservancy, I think. Aaron, you're here. I just want, you can come on up if you'd like. Yep, yep. I told her that you guys didn't have a lot of questions or anything, but she did want to come in and say hello and maybe explain the project real quick, so, yeah.
Thanks so much for making the money agenda, Mary. I'm the director of conservation for the Duchess Land Conservancy, and I think you're aware, we're making an application to the New York State Department of Ag and Markets to fund farmland protection on.
Farm brewery. And one of the requirements is for us to obtain.
I just turned the bucket.
Okay. One of, one of the requirements is for us to obtain a letter from the planning board or planning official in the town attesting to development pressure, and that's obviously a very real thing in Kipsey. So we, you know, we only drafted that letter to be helpful. You're more than welcome to make edits to it if you feel it's necessary. And yeah, happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thanks. Do you have any comments, Mike?
No, not at all. And we just need a authorization for the chairman to provide the letter, so that's, that would be the motion.
Lisa, have you took, take a look at it?
I don't think she has.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. But it's, you know, this is consistent with the town's conference of plan and also with the recently adopted open space plan. This is an area of the town that is, I mean, the only area of the town that really has a lot, any remaining agricultural character. Plan B has been in business now for a few years. They are a farm brewery, so that is an agricultural operation, and so.
Yeah, Evan's done a great job out there, you know, growing things for the, for his beer on the land.
The hops.
Making a farm of wild berries and.
Yeah.
I have still legal concerns with the letter. So I didn't actually look at the language of the letter, but the concept of the letter I'm perfectly fine with, no issues.
Okay, thanks, Lisa.
What is the funding source for the conservation?
Sure. So we have actually already 50% of the funding committed from the Duchess County Partnership for Manageable Growth Program, and we're now seeking the remaining funding from the New York State Department of Ag and Markets, who has a farmland protection implementation program.
Thanks.
All right. Do we need a motion or just?
Just a, just a motion to authorize chairman to provide the letter.
I'd like to commend the chairman on that letter. It's very well written.
We'll make it nice, we'll put it on the letter.
Okay. I move that the chairman signs the.
Is authorized to sign.
Oh, is authorized to sign the Duchess Land Conservancy letter.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. And were you here when you, when the Habitat homes were coming?
No, she got here.
No, she got here.
Oh, was that earlier?
Just by, off of Fulton Avenue, it's called Sunset Avenue. There's a, there's a plan for.
Chair, who are you in a plan B?
For Plan B to use a conservation subdivision of five houses.
Oh.
And use some remaining land there, there has to be a conservancy, and I don't know if that'd be, it's not, it's not high, huge acreage, but something.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, always happy to discuss the logistics and possibilities. I know, is that the required under zoning for conservation subdivisions to?
Yes, yes.
Protect.
So that needs to be looked at.
Yeah.
Owned by someone.
Gotcha. Okay, well.
I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to you if that becomes an option, yeah.
Sure.
We haven't figured that out yet with Habitat, so.
Great. Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we have.
All right. Next up, the town code amendment for cannabis retail dispensaries and tobacco stores. This is back before the planning board, the town board last time had tabled adoption of the, of the proposed law. They've since made a few changes to make it more in line with the emerging state regulations for cannabis retail dispensaries. This was on the town board's agenda last night for a public hearing. There were a few comments primarily in favor, none opposed, so, you know, good support, which was good. And the town board is really just waiting on the planning board's recommendation. We suggest a, a positive recommendation on this, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Comments from the board members? Peter?
No comment.
Ben?
Yeah, man.
No, I, I think I had questions before, but you, you answered them. We were asking about like how these stores are going to be notified, and you said, you know, probably letters. And I think I had already asked about the, the other thing having to do with like CBD oils, CBD lotions, stuff like that, and.
Separate thing.
Separate, yeah, it's completely separate, so.
This is really dealing with the state licensed retail dispensaries.
Right, right.
And there's also provisions in here related to tobacco stores, which really have come about because of the unfortunate proliferation of illegal sales, right?
Right.
And so we want to have a little bit more, a closer look at when new tobacco stores or smoke shops come into the town, so we don't have, it's not as easy necessarily to just open one up. Anyway, that's, that's why it's all.
Yeah. Okay. I move that the planning board convey a positive recommendation to the town board regarding adoption of the proposed town code amendment.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
Yeah, we have Hudson Heritage Time Extension. David Cooper's actually on for this, so if you don't mind, I'll just let him do the explanation on this. Go ahead, David, take it away.
Everybody, so this is the extension request for the initial subdivision plat or approval that, that was approved back in, in August of 2020. If you remember, they, Hudson Heritage came in with a three phased subdivision plat. The first phase has been filed and recorded. The second and third phases, they had three years to record them. They are asking for an extension of the time to record the second and third phase. As we all know, they're actually coming back in and have already submitted a proposed amendment to the subdivision, but since the existing approval is still the 2020 approval, we, we need to keep that, the phases two and three valid, and so we are recommending that, that you agree to the extension any days. So while that extension is pending, we can work out the other pending subdivision application at this point. Uh-oh. Was, was that just, was that just the Zoom community?
That was my fault. I had turned off the microphone briefly because we had a little ringing in here, and so you missed all of our.
I said, I said it sounds pretty straightforward. Any comments from the board members?
No.
No.
Nothing further, so go ahead with the motion then.
I move the planning board grant 180-day extension of time to file the Hudson Heritage final subdivision plat section two and section three with the Duchess County clerk from the filing due date of July 30th, 2023 forward to January 26, 2024, subject to all other conditions of the August 20, 2020 adoption of the resolution granting a conditional final major subdivision plat, approval for the Hudson Heritage project final subdivision plat section two and section three.
Second.
Moved in seconded for the time extension, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Thanks, David, and have a good night.
Bye.
And we have a Friendly Honda time extension as well.
Yep, this is for an earlier site plan. There's one of the buildings, it's the repair shop, I guess, portion of it that they never completed. They're still interested in doing it at some point, but, you know, because they're doing the facade improvement now, they would like to have a little bit more time, and so they're asking for an extension of their previous approval. So I think, oh, it's on the back. Okay. Yep. So Eric wrote out a motion for you.
All right. Any comments?
None.
No.
No.
Okay. I move the planning board amend sheet PP2 Phase 2 Site Plan revised dated 7/3/2018 of the Friendly Honda Comprehensive Site Plan amended June 18, 2018, signed by the chairman 1/31/2019. Phasing note number three to be revised as follows and subject to the conditions below: Construction of deferred improvements shown in Phase 2 Site Plan shall commence issuance of building permits no later than April 1, 2027, and shall be completed to middle and town acceptance of as-built plans with certifications for Phase 2 improvements and issuance of final certificates of occupancy no later than May 1 of the following calendar year. Failure to meet the commencement date shall render the Phase 2 Site Plan approval null and void, and failure after commencement to complete said plans as required herein shall be, shall be deemed a violation of the planning board's amended site plan approval. Conditions of site plan amended approval 1 through 5.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. And we have one more on the agenda. This is Verizon Store Retail. I move that the planning board grant 190-day time extension of conditional amended site plan approval from June 20, 2023 forward to September 18, 2023, and to advise the applicant that obtaining site plan, signature, and ability permit are necessary to preserve this, preserve the site plan approval.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Any other business before the town, before the planning board tonight?
No. I move that we terminate tonight's meeting.
No, but a second tonight.
Second.
Ooh, okay. All right. Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
Good night, everyone.
Signing off.
Bye.
Thanks, Lisa, thanks, Andy.